Hello, welcome to our June 24, 2020 meeting. Before the formal meeting of the Phoenix City Council, the Assistant Housing Governing Board will convene. I will begin by calling to order the meeting of the Assistant Housing Governing Board. Will the city clerk please call the roll?
Board member DeCecio.
Here.
Board member Garcia.
Here.
Board member Nowakowski. Board member Pastor.
Here.
Board member Stark.
Here.
Board member Waring.
Here.
Board member Weisahan.
I don't know.
Board member Weisahan. Thank you. Vice Chair Guardado.
Here.
Chairwoman Gallego.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you all for joining us. We begin with the resolution adopting the Phoenix Public Housing Authority proposed asset management budget for fiscal year 2020-2021. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the resolution.
Any discussion? Roll call.
DeCecio.
Here.
Garcia.
Yes.
Pastor. Stark.
Yes.
Waring. Weisahan. Guardado.
Here, yes.
Thank you. Gallego. Motion passes eight zero.
We next move to item number four. Do we have a motion to approve that resolution?
Motion to approve the resolution.
Any discussion? Roll call.
DeCecio.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
Pastor.
I'm having difficulty on muting here.
Thank you. Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
No.
Weisahan. Williams.
Yes, there's a lot of static when you talk.
Thank you, Councilwoman Williams. Yes, there's some background noise. I apologize. Guardado.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes seven to one.
Thank you. We then move to item number five. Do we have a motion to approve that resolution?
Motion to approve the resolution.
Any discussion? Roll call.
DeCecio.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
Past- Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
No.
Weisahan. Weisahan.
Are you saying Williams?
Yes. Thank you, Councilwoman Williams. Yes, we have you and we have board member Weisahan. Guardado.
Yes.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes eight to one.
Wonderful, thank you. An exciting vote with our great partnership with Native American Connections and redevelopment of Deck Park Vista's. With that, we have concluded the business of the Assistant Housing Governing Board and we adjourned. Thank you to board member, our board member for joining us. We will now call to order the formal meeting of the Phoenix City Council for June 24, 2020. Roll call.
Councilman DeCecio.
Here.
Councilmember Garcia.
Here.
Councilman Nowakowski. Councilwoman Pastor. Councilwoman Stark.
Here.
Councilman Waring.
Here.
Councilwoman Williams.
Here.
Vice Mayor Guardado.
Here.
Mayor Gallego.
Here.
Mayor Gallego.
We have an interpreter here, Mario Barajas, to assist individuals.
Mayor, I'm here also.
Thank you, Councilman Nowakowski. We'll.
Sorry about that.
We think it's going to be a rough sound day. We're starting off with some static. But it can only go up from here. Can the city clerk please read the 24-hour paragraph?
The titles of the following ordinance and resolution numbers on the agenda were available to the public at least 24 hours prior to this council meeting and therefore may be read by title or agenda item only. Ordinances number G 6703 and 6708 through 6714, S 46778 through 46819, and resolutions 21838 through 21844.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, do you have a motion on the meeting minutes from June 26, 2019?
Yes, I would like to make a motion to approve the minutes from June 26, 2019.
Second.
All those in favor, please signal aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Councilman DeCecio, do you have a motion on the meeting minutes from July 3 of 2019?
I move their approval, Mayor.
Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Vice Mayor, do we have a motion on mayor and city council board and commission nominations?
Yes, we have a motion to approve mayor and city council boards and commissions nominations.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Vice Mayor, do we have a motion on our liquor license applications?
Yes, we have motion to approve items four through five.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Passes unanimously. City clerk, are we ready for ordinances, resolutions, new business planning and zoning?
Yes, Mayor.
Vice Mayor, do we have a motion?
Yes, we have a motion to approve items six through 89, except the following. Items 16 through 20, 33, 35, 36, 60, and 61. Item 62 and 89 have been withdrawn. Items 29, items 29 is requested to be continued to July 1, 2020, and item 88 is requested to be continued to September 2, 2020. Item 87 is as revised and excluding these items for public comment. Seven, eight, nine, 10, 34, 60, 64, 82, 84, 85, 86, and 87.
Roll call.
DeCecio.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
Nowakowski.
Mayor, I want to explain my vote. You didn't pull 43 out, right?
No, Mayor.
All right. I just want to make sure that the selling of this property that for the development of a senior center near the Caesar Thomas Community Center is still a part of this motion which is stated in this document, so I'll be voting yes as long as it's stated that way.
It is. All right, thank you.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Guardado.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Nine zero.
We next move to item number seven, microception. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve item seven.
We have one member of the public to address the council on the topic of microception. Marcus Reed.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi. So, not that I'm against police accountability personally, but I am inquisitive about the language in the agenda report. That is, it says protect the police from unnecessary liability. That in itself shows that PLEA has too much control over the misconduct of the police officers in our community. We are desperately in need of a more viable way to prevent all, all in any way of deviant behavior from our police department. The citizens are aware of the misdeeds and the spin the PR department is putting on the so-called bad apples to help them out. And so I would just really like, you know, more so the focus on PLEA and not, you know, the video recording of these reviews. But I do want to yield the rest of the time for a moment of silence for the brave first-line medical care staff that are putting their lives on the line and not being recognized as people that we need to protect from COVID.
Thank you for your testimony. Any council member comments on item number seven? Roll call.
DeCecio.
Yes.
Garcia. Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Guardado.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes eight zero.
We next move to item number eight, instant armor. Vice Mayor, do we have a motion?
Yes, we have motion to approve item eight.
Marcus had also asked to comment on this. Marcus, did you have additional comments to provide?
Yeah, I actually have a question, more or less. So is this additional to the 25 million that was approved last week?
Thank you for your comment. Council member comments? Roll call.
DeCecio.
Yes.
Garcia. Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring. Williams.
Yes.
Guardado.
Yes.
Gallego.
This is Nowakowski, I'm a yes.
Thank you, Councilman Nowakowski. Passes nine zero.
Thank you. We next move to item number nine, safe haven for purchase of windshield. Do we have a motion?
Yes, motion to approve item nine.
Marcus has a comment on this one as well. Mr. Reed.
Mayor, he's no longer on the line.
Wonderful. Would, okay. Any council member comments? Roll call.
DeCecio.
Yes.
Garcia. Nowakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
I'm sorry, you guys didn't, yes? Can you guys hear me?
Yes, thank you, Councilman Waring and Councilwoman Williams. Guardado.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
We next move to item 10, first two ink. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve item 10.
Second.
Any council member comment? Roll call.
DeCecio.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
Nowakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Guardado.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
Thank you. Items 16 through 20 are annual payments related to our water department. Vice Mayor, do we have a motion on items 16 through 20?
Well, before I make the motion, I just wanted to make sure that Councilmember DeCecio was okay with us bundling them all up together.
Yes, that's perfectly, oh, go ahead, Mayor, sorry.
No, Councilmember DeCecio, that's great. Yes.
Was that yes?
Mayor, this is Jim, though.
Oh.
I wanted, I wanted to vote yes on 16.
Wonderful, a responsible decision. We will, Vice Mayor, do you have a motion on item 16?
Yes, I have a motion, motion, motion to approve item 16.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Item 16 is our membership in the Municipal Water Users Association where Councilwoman Williams serves us with great skill. Any council member comments on AMWA?
Is this just 16 we're voting on, Mayor, or is it the whole?
This is only 16, yes.
Okay, well, I'll just, I'll just give one quick comment on all of them. From 16 through 20, these represent about $800,000 in membership dues, and those are considerable when we look at rate increases and we think about it. And the question is whether or not we really need to have these membership dues, and I just have real problems with that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Williams, thank you so much for your service on AMWA.
Well, thank you. I just want to say, I know that this is a large amount of money, but each one of those memberships is important to the city of Phoenix. It contains not only local, state, but federal water issues, protecting our resources, making sure that we continue to have ample water supplies in a fair distributed manner. So they really serve a purpose. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Roll call.
DeCecio.
No.
Garcia.
Yes.
Nowakowski.
Yes.
Pastor. Stark.
Yes.
Yes, I'm sorry you guys can't hear me, but.
Thank you.
We did this time.
Williams.
Yes.
Guardado.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes eight one.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, do we have a motion on items 17 through 20?
Yes, we have a motion to approve items 17 through 20.
Second.
Council member comments? Roll call.
DeCecio.
No.
Garcia.
Yes.
Nowakowski.
Yes.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
No.
Williams.
Yes.
Guardado.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes seven to two.
Thank you. Item 33 is a contract with Community Legal Services. Vice Mayor, do we have a motion?
Yes, we have a motion to approve item 33.
We have a motion and a second. This item is related to providing legal aid to folks facing housing challenges including eviction. Very important during this time of an eviction moratorium and when it is listed in a few short weeks. Councilmen, do any council members have comments on this?
Yeah, Mayor, I just got a couple of quick questions of staff.
Wonderful, Councilmember DeCecio.
Thank you. Staff, because I can't see who's there, but the question I've got, it's about $800,000. Why are we just not using, these are COVID dollars, why are we not using that just to pay off their mortgages rather than go through the whole legal issue? I don't get it. The $800,000 would go a long ways for individuals to pay, and that's what it's designed for. And if people, if this is, it has to be COVID-related, correct? Those are the two questions first.
Good afternoon, Mayor Gallego and Councilman DeCecio. This is Michelle Franklin, the Human Services Director. To answer your first, your second question, hi, how are you? To answer your second question, yes, it has to be COVID-related. To answer your first question, oftentimes individuals who are having to go to justice court related to evictions may not necessarily be related to not paying rent. It could be, for example, you know, the air conditioning is not working and in the midst of COVID, they're needing to go other places, so they may choose the renter to break their lease or not pay their rent, if you will. And so there can be legal rights that are available to that individual that he or she may not be aware of, that Community Legal Services being able to have the legal background to articulate to those individuals, here are your rights. So it's not only relative to evictions, it could be other things regarding landlord-tenant laws that Community Legal Services would be responsible for. Of course, understanding that any of the services have to be tied to a COVID-related
So the question I've got too on the, it's approximately $800,000. Is that based on the hourly that they're going to be doing, or is it just based, is it a budget-related, or tell me what that is? Is it a blank number?
Mayor Gallego and Councilman DeCecio, it is a blank number. We are not sure necessarily how many individuals will come through our justice courts. We do know, however, from talking with those in the community who work in this area, we continue to see and experience concerns with individuals not having appropriate legal representation when they do have to go to court for these types of issues. Oftentimes, the landlords will have legal representation, but the tenants do not.
I understand that part. I'm talking more about the financial end, because whenever we pay our attorneys, it's based on a contracted amount, but they have to do X amount of hours. They could do one hour, and then that's what they get paid for, or they get, you know, they do 100 hours and they get paid X amount for that. My understanding is that this is not designed that way, it's just a lump sum, and how do we keep track of how many hours the attorneys have paid, put into the deal? And how many, and how do we track the actual individuals that they were supposed to have helped?
So Mayor Gallego, Councilman DeCecio, it is based upon a flat rate. However, Community and Legal Services is required as a part of our contract to be able to demonstrate to us the number of individuals that are served, as well as ensuring that it is COVID-related.
And what is the rate?
Mayor Gallego and Councilman DeCecio, it is just a flat rate?
No, I don't understand, but what is the rate, I mean, what is the rate that they're charging per hour?
Mayor Gallego and Councilman DeCecio, I don't have that specific information in front of me. I can, I can try and locate that in the next few minutes. I just don't happen to have it right in front of me, so I apologize.
No, it's just unusual for us to do a lump sum like this, because I've not seen that. And usually you have a budget, but they have to do X amount of hours in that budget to At least the way I'm seeing this, they could do one case and they're paying $1,000. It could be, or they could do 1,000 cases.
Mayor, Councilman DeCecio, the 800,000 is, is an authorization of an estimate for some number of cases. They actually have to perform in order to draw against that number. So we're not writing them a check upfront for 800,000. They have to, they have to demonstrate per case in order to use that money fully.
Well, you're either doing it by, by hourly or by case.
I'm sorry, I misspoke. Yeah, I misspoke.
Go ahead.
We're going to check and see if it's per case or per hour. Ms. Franklin will find out.
I would assume it's per hour, right.
I think that's correct, but we're going to double-check.
It's just the way it's worded, it just looks like it's a lump sum amount without any accountability into the, you know, number of cases or anything.
It's an authorization for an up-to amount based on an estimate since we haven't completed it yet, so that's why it is written in that way.
Okay.
Is there something more? Okay.
But you still went, just the hourly is all I need to know.
We're checking on that.
Okay, that's fine.
Mayor, do we want to come back to item 33 to get that information, or? We can, we can come back with that information here in just a minute.
Councilman DeCecio, would you be comfortable moving forward, and you could vote no as you did at policy, I suspect?
Yeah, as long, yes, as long as they put whatever the number is on the record before the end of the meeting.
Wonderful, there are many CARES Act I's where it would be appropriate to have that discussion, so. Any additional council members?
Yeah, I don't mind voting it. Go ahead, sorry, Mayor.
Nope, okay, thank you, Councilmen, we appreciate your flexibility.
You bet.
Do any additional council members have questions? Roll call.
DeCecio.
No.
Garcia.
Yes.
Nowakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Williams.
Yes.
Guardado.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes eight one. Passes eight one.
Wonderful, thank you. We next move to item thirty-four, Contract with Crisis Response Network for Web-Based Emergency Shelter Availability Portal. Vice Mayor, do we have a motion?
Yes, motion to approve item thirty-four.
Second.
A motion and a second. We have three members of the public to address the council on this item. We will begin with Ash Us, followed by Jimmy Donnelly.
Hello, can you hear me all right?
Yes, we can.
All right, this is Ash Us again. I called in yesterday to voice some concerns about the city's plan. And I recognized how hard a lot of staff had worked on that plan. I express my gratitude to you, Mayor Gallego, for going public and supporting our shelter case or saying likely would. Today, I am calling because I am enraged and because I want to be clear with every single one of you. I will personally ensure that this item and other attempts to criminalize homelessness are put to a halt, or if they're not, that everyone knows about what is going on. I've been part of a team trying to add shelter beds since January of two thousand and nineteen. And can you imagine my frustration in looking through this agenda last night and noticing that you're proposing or even possibly considering the idea that Phoenix PD are going to be the ones who can manage shelter placement for our clients? Shame on every single one of you who were involved in this, I don't know who. Shame, just shame on you. When, when COVID happened, when Andre House couldn't have volunteers, we were all here, our staff were here, tried to make sure that people had food and restrooms. And as if people without shelter, they didn't have enough to worry about, you're making life harder by relocating them. The shady attempt to find a mechanism to allow police to check shelter availability and then arrest or cite or trespass people who don't want to leave their belongings and go to a temporary hotel in Scottsdale for thirty days where you're possibly considering that there's shelter. Yes, you did make some additional options available with COVID. Yes, we lost shelter beds at CAS. Yes, you opened the convention center, but people can't sleep in it. Yes, you took steps to protect the property of business owners, but when you did that, you moved hundreds of people in the, where they were more likely to get COVID, they were more likely to spread COVID to people in neighborhoods, because they're in alleys and parks now, because you moved them all out of here. How dare you, that police have the ability to put people in shelter, in the meantime that somebody are telling us nonprofits that we can't shelter. I'm going to close with a statement from one of our guests, because she's experiencing homelessness and doesn't have a mechanism to tune into this meeting, because y'all haven't created a path. But she says, her name is Darlene, I think sending people to unknown locations only magnifies the trauma of being homeless. We're humans, we're not objects to be placed, where it's convenient for the politicians and money holders to pretend we don't exist. You're not going to ship me somewhere to get me off of your street just because you can afford a seat on the council. I too, I'm a resident of District Seven, I'm not cargo. That's what Darlene said, thank you all.
Jimmy Donnelly will be followed by Tyler Rosenstiel.
Mayor?
Councilmember Garcia?
Yeah, is Ash still on the line? I have a question.
Mayor, Ash is still on the line.
Ash, was any, I know you work at Andre House and you work with other folks. Did anyone from our city staff contact you about yesterday's plan? And then about today's, about this response network? Is this the first time you hear about it? Or have you had any conversations with anyone on our staff about it?
This was the first time I was hearing about this particular agenda item. I saw it last night, it was news to me. We have met with various departments with the city of Phoenix pertinent to the zoning case, so, meeting with offices. So, no, we were not involved in the planning of yesterday's document and certainly had no knowledge indication of anything pertinent to this agenda item.
And I, I know you, you work at an organization that has its own leadership, but do you feel that organizations such as the one you work with will cooperate with this portal?
It's hard to tell, not involved in it. It would be a great tool to have a streamlined process for shelter availability. It would be really helpful if that were the case for our orgs to be able to go in and see where there are beds available. But it's hard to imagine us being able to cooperate, because the numbers don't add up, there aren't beds.
Is there such systems now? How do you all track what beds are available or not?
The current process right now is that someone goes, single adults experiencing homelessness go to the Brian Garcia Welcome Center at the campus for an intake. People who seek shelter have to line up outside of CAS for shelter. That's the way that the process has been working. So there's no mechanism where a provider at circle the city who is treating someone could look online and say, oh, there's a bed in CAS, I can reserve you one. That's not how it works. How it works now is that people have to line up, as I said, and that process has been largely altered due to COVID and to be responsible with social distancing, et cetera.
Do you, your organization, or do you know of other organizations? Do they share this type of information with police or any other city or county employees about beds?
Most of the information pertinent to people experiencing homelessness is stored in HMIS, which Crisis Response Network is the entity involved in this proposed item. They manage HMIS. And so typically, when information goes into that, it's certainly not expected that it's going to be available by police. There are some municipalities where their outreach folks have agreements with the police department, or I've gone to collaborative meetings where there are police officers, I believe it's in Glendale, which are in HMIS and have the ability to look at that data to be able to assist the providers. But it's in assistance capacity, it's certainly not in managing who gets a bed and who doesn't.
Thank you.
Jimmy Donnelly, followed by Tyler.
Okay, hi, yes, I'm Jimmy Donnelly. I'm actually homeless right now. And I'm going by your numbers, I'm pulling off Google. CAS numbers for positive COVID is actually low. So what you're offering is, you know, jail people, where you're putting them to one of the worst COVID hotspots. I don't see how that's a positive movement. You kind of lost me there.
Thank you. Our final member of the public is Tyler.
Hello, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name is Tyler Rosenstiel. I am the Director of the Homeless Management Information System at Crisis Response Network. I wanted to just explain the intent behind this portal and to be able to answer any questions. I think everyone is familiar with the annual point-in-time count. This is where every shelter and persons on the street that are experiencing homelessness are counted and surveyed. And each year, we're able to say on a single point in time in January, what the bed availability was at individual shelters. We're able to say at shelter X, the number of beds that were available was a hundred, and the number of beds that were used were one hundred. It should be of no surprise that when we do that annual count, nearly all of the shelter beds every single night of that count are full. The idea behind this portal is to be able to make that information happen on a live basis. So rather than having the information only annually, where we would know if the shelter beds are full or if there is vacancy, we would be able to have that on a live basis. The coordination that is being discussed is really done in conjunction with human services and police. The benefit of this is really not about trying to say, you know, police are dictating where people will go. That is still going to be a client's choice. There's no policy directives here, saying that police must do X or that human services members must do Y. This is really an effort of transparency, to be able to ensure that the community as a whole, police, outreach workers, other shelters are able to see what beds are available. The process that we'll have in place is working with the shelters to be able to ensure that they have an opportunity to participate in how they would report the information, including updating the information themselves, receiving a call or a text from us, the Crisis Response Network, or entering the database, entering actual client data into the municipal campus. So, thank you for the opportunity to explain this process.
Thank you. Thank you for partnering with us. We'll next go to our Assistant City Manager, Deanna Janovich, for a little bit of additional background on this. And if you could tell us, Deanna, if it is a national best practice to understand bed availability in your community?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. It is a national best practice to have a system in place and be able to identify where the bed availability is. I do want to be clear, this is not a police system. This is a regional solution to address where our bed availability is and where we lack beds, and a better way to articulate those numbers and the needs for increased beds in our community. We have heard time and time again from our providers, the need for additional beds. We don't have a system currently that can tell us. I will tell you and remind the mayor and council that we already have a contract with CPLC and U-MOM, where they do allocate beds for our first responders, so that when they do come in contact with individuals living on the streets, we have beds ready to go, that they can coordinate with our first responders and our outreach teams to get them into a bed. The ultimate goal is to help get individuals off the street. There is no intent here where we are attempting to or trying to arrest people. This is all about trying to help the homeless get housed. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Nowakowski.
Thank you, Mayor. So, we heard over and over that this is a way for criminalizing homeless. So what I heard from you right now is that it's really a tool to find beds. So if a police officer is called on a homeless individual sleeping in somebody's yard, that they can look at the system or porthole and basically say that, you mentioned like CPLC, that they have two or three beds open, so they can contact that service and basically take that person there to get some resources and help. Is that the way it's supposed to be set up? Or is it that they look at this person and, and I'm not sure how the criminalization would happen?
You are absolutely correct. This is not to try to criminalize the homeless individuals. This is, again, to lead with services and try to identify additional tools in the toolbox to help our first responders. So when they do encounter people living on the streets, they're able to access and know where the beds are. I'll also add that we have ten outreach teams, so the first responders will also be coordinating with the outreach teams. They will be the ones working in partnership with them to make the contacts and help them bridge that gap to get them housed.
Councilmember Garcia?
This might be a question for Chris, or I don't know, Deanna, if you can answer it. Isn't it right that the reason we've seen people camping on the street is because we had a court decision that told us that people are allowed to camp only when beds are not available? And I, and I'm paraphrasing, but is that correct?
There, yeah, I'll let the city attorney speak to that.
Mayor, Councilman Garcia, yes, there was a court case called the Boise Case that prohibits criminal charging and prosecution of an individual simply for the condition of needing to sleep in a public space. There were still restrictions and things that the jurisdiction could do to manage that situation, but they can't be cited criminally for camping or sleeping in public.
So is it okay to say that we don't have, currently, there's not enough beds, but we also don't have the system to know whether there's beds available or not?
Yes, Mayor, Councilman Garcia, you are correct. We do not have a system that can tell us where the beds are and the availability of those beds. And we do not have enough beds in the region at this point, which is why in the plan yesterday, we had recommended additional low-barrier shelter and additional emergency beds around the region. This will also be able to give us really good, accurate data to show the need for additional beds.
So it's also safe to say that, although our intent of the policy, which, backing up a little bit, this is why yesterday I was upset, because I saw things like this and we were told we weren't going to move forward with these sorts of things until we actually had a community dialogue. And I'm getting text messages now, and we heard from some community folks now that they had no input in this decision. And now we're moving forward with, if the intent is what you're putting out there, it would be great. We will be able to find resources and allow people to be taken different places. But it's also true that at the hands of the police, if they're not able to access a system that says that there is enough beds or there's a bed somewhere, they will now be able to arrest or remove someone from camping. Is that correct, Chris?
Mayor, members of the council, Councilman Garcia, yes, theoretically, if there is no spaces available and the individual is refusing to accept other assistance, then they would be within Boise to cite them. However, they have to make them aware and provide those opportunities. And if the person rejects them, then they would be able to cite them if that was what they chose to do.
And I think that's, and I'm assuming that's the criminalization piece that folks are talking about. And without actual policy and intent and being able to talk with partners of how we're going to use these policies, they can get out of our hands and they could be used to therefore criminalize or remove people from certain areas. And so I would be voting no on this. I, I think we need to find community solutions. I think, again, I'll reiterate, like yesterday, we need to work with the partners, especially those partners that are working every day with this population. And we need to start working with the folks, like the ones who called, the people without shelter, and include them in figuring out how we have these solutions. And I would hate for this to be used in something other than the intent that we're stating now. And so I hope we really can go through that process we talked about yesterday and not attempt to move on things without an actual strategy and, and, and move on things that could potentially hurt more than help. Thank you.
Councilman Nowakowski?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, so District Seven happens to be the home of CAS and all the different services, most of the services in the city of Phoenix for the homeless residents. One of the things that you made a commitment back in March is that you would ask staff, or you had the eight-hour rule, where you can ask staff to come up with a plan before the summer break, and that's exactly what we did. So yesterday, we explained the plan in details with a roadmap of different solutions, from services to programs to resources at the city of Phoenix, and trying to reach out to other partners besides a regional approach. So I believe that that was something that was committed back in March from all of us, and that we basically delivered that yesterday, and that the plan's out, that our staff's going to be working with all these organizations. And once again, we've been hearing from the Andre House. So if you can make sure, Deanna, that you include the Andre House in these community outreach and make sure that they're a part of the process. And I think it's really important. The other thing is, I understand exactly what Councilmember Garcia is talking about, but at the same time, the complaints that we get is that somebody's pitching a tent in front of somebody's front yard, and that's private property. So they call the police to actually, first of all, ask them to remove their tent, because they're actually in some, in front of somebody's yard or in the back of somebody's house or in somebody's vacant lot. So that's private property. So then the police officers either use our care service, Phoenix Cares, where they bring in a nonprofit that deals with homelessness and tries to help those individuals with counseling and resources and all that. And now that we're providing the porthole to look for different alternatives like beds and all that. So I, I haven't gotten complaints about people being arrested or are charged for sleeping on, on city sidewalks or anything like that, that aren't provided with, with, with services. So if that's an issue, I think I would like you to look into that, Deanna, and making sure that we're looking for all the different results possible to basically help these individuals out. I know the biggest concern that people had is during the day, when the sun's out there and it's a hundred and ten degrees and it's about a hundred and twenty degrees out on the streets, that we provide some kind of air-conditioned location. So that's why we opened up our convention center from early morning till, till sun ups to sunset, so that individuals can actually stay inside an air-conditioned area during the day, where they can, where they can find shelter. So if there's any other ideas... So if there's any other ideas or any other concerns, I'd be more than glad to, to accept those or any of our council members, and we'll just feed that back to Michelle or to Deanna. And once again, Deanna, if you can really talk to the Andre Center to make Andre House, to make sure that they're a part of this process, that now that we're taking it out to the community, that they can be a part of that. And anything else we can come up with to help our homeless residents, hopefully it's a win-win situation. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any additional councilmember comments? Roll call.
Mayor, I'm sorry.
Councilwoman Pastor.
Yes, I just want to get some clarity. This is a portal that we will be able to use to see where beds are located.
Mayor, Councilwoman Pastor, members of the council, yes, that's correct. The intent is to be able to identify where beds are available, not only where the beds are available, what, what type of beds? Are they beds for families, single? Those types of questions will help us determine the best fit for the individuals when we're coming in contact with them.
And who will be in part of this process? Or who will be, will it be the CARES people, or will it be the police department that's determining what the next steps are? I, I think we, as a council, need to understand, because...
So Crisis Response Network is the provider of the homeless management information system. So they house the system, so they'll be working collectively with the shelter providers, they'll work with the outreach teams, they'll work with our police department, so that those types of entities would have access to the system, so that as they're coming, the ultimate goal is as they're coming into contact with people that are experiencing homelessness, they'll be able to access the system and see where we have beds available. And then they would be partnering specifically with the outreach teams in order to make the connection with the homeless individuals to get them into housing.
Okay. So one of my questions is, I, I want to understand the steps in the process. So the question is, I am homeless right now, I get in, I'm in, somebody is in contact with me. What are the steps? And how will this portal help in this process?
So as you come across a homeless individual, once the system is built and individuals are trained and understand how to access the system, you will be able to go in the system, for example, and see that Darlene Newsom with U-Mom will be putting in her bed availability. If we come into contact with the family, you will be able to tell that there's a bed available at U-Mom, so that we can partner with the outreach teams and the homeless individuals to make that connection, do the intake like we do now. We put all of that information into the HMIS system, and they will be able to make a connection with U-Mom to get them into that bed.
Okay. So where does police come into play?
The only involvement with police is sometimes they're the first interactions when they're coming across the homeless individuals. I will tell you, they already work closely with our outreach teams. So when they're coming in contact with homeless individuals in the parks, down by the campus, they have access to the homeless outreach teams, and they call those teams, and those teams come and provide the contact and services to the homeless individuals. Human Services is actually the lead on this project, not the police department.
Okay. So if a police officer comes in contact with me, then they realize that I tell my story, I'm homeless, this is the situation, then they call a crisis management team? Is that CBI?
They can call a crisis outreach team. We have 10 different outreach teams. We have eight that work with our CARES program. We have one on our light rail and one that works specifically with our veterans.
Okay. So I have another question. Do we have enough crisis teams?
No, I think we proposed in the plan yesterday to increase mental health outreach teams as well as regular outreach teams.
Okay. Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Mayor?
The Vice Mayor had asked to speak at the same time as Councilwoman Pastor, so I would go for her first if she's still interested.
No, I'm sorry, I think that was just Councilwoman Pastor. I, I don't have any comments.
Okay. Councilmember DeCecio.
Thank you, Mayor. Just, I just want to make sure we're direct, and I'm good with this, and I'm good with the police doing it, but I just want to make sure that we also, you know, make sure that the public and the city council is aware of what's going on, too. The police will, and I'm just going to ask direct, the police will have contact with the homeless, correct, Deanna?
Yes, the police will have contact with the homeless.
They will have direct contact with the homeless. So I just want to make sure we get these things on the record, and, you know, I know there's, everyone's trying to manage what other people are thinking or saying. It's just better just to lay it all out there at all times. And the police will be able to bring individuals to the homeless shelter, correct?
Yes, they will. As I stated before, we currently have a contract with CPLC and U-Mom for our first responders. They are aware of beds that are available there, so when they do have individuals that they may come into contact with late at night, they have the opportunity to call those providers and get those individuals into those beds.
And they can do that, and they will do that, correct?
Yes.
They've done it?
Yes.
Okay, so nothing's going to change on that. Okay, I just wanted to make sure we just do this, and it's okay wherever the cards, you know, fall on these things, but it's better just let the public know. I'm good with the police doing this, they've done it in the past, I think it's part of their function. Some may not be, but I am. And I just, but I want to make sure we always get these things on the record and it's clear. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you, Mayor. It literally reads on here that the Phoenix Police Department will be the primary group to access the portal, from the first paragraph. And so, I don't know why I would say that if that's not what's happening. What I would like to do, and I don't know who made the motion, is if I could do a friendly amendment, that any information that's obtained through this cannot be used to criminalize or give tickets to anyone on the street.
Mayor?
Councilwoman Williams.
Councilwoman, could you explain that more? I don't understand what you're saying.
So, what I, what I explained earlier is that the reason people can camp out on the streets is because there's no beds available. What I don't want to see is that we now create a system that allows for people to be arrested or ticketed, when our intent has been stated by staff is to actually support people and find them a place to stay if places are available. I'm okay with that, I think that's great. If we use this for good, which the intent is to get people to a place to stay, that's great. But if we're going to use this, as it reads here, and it says the Phoenix Police Department will be the primary group to access this portal, what that message sends to me is that we're going to use this portal in order to remove, arrest, or ticket people who may be camping. Does that make sense?
Vice Mayor.
So it, it just sounds like there's just a, a lot of, a lot of questions, and there's just a lot of things that we want to add into this, or maybe make changes. I mean, I would, given that I made the motion, I wanted to see, I would rather just continue the item for next, for next Wednesday, for the first, just so that everyone can get their, their questions answered, and we can do whatever changes we need to make. Because I don't understand what the repercussions would be if we made any of these changes.
Thank you. So there, then we have a motion, you have with, we have a motion to continue to July 1st on the table. Do we have a second for that?
Second.
Okay. I am going to support the motion to continue. Any comments on the motion to continue?
Mayor?
Councilman DeCecio.
Just that if we do end up continuing, I, to me, it doesn't matter one way or the other, whether we do it today or next week, but I want it to be extremely clear as what we're going to do and not do. And I would have an issue and problem, probably, and may not vote for it, if it didn't allow us as a policing unit to be able to ticket individuals if they've got a warrant out for them, or if there's another situation occurring, or if they've broken the law in another place. You can't tell, I mean, I'm just letting the, you know, just letting everyone know, you cannot tell the police officers, who are required by law to do certain functions, they're required to do that. If they see something, yeah, they can let things go, like they can let tickets or things like that go by. But to actually put out a policy, you know, we get in a very fine line there, Mayor. So, from my end, they have to have those abilities to do that, that's part of their toolbox, we just have to believe that they're going to do it responsibly. But we need to be very clear as to what they're, they've done in the past, and if there are going to be any changes from what they've done in the past, and be very clear about this stuff. I get where Councilmember Garcia is going, I respect him for that, and we just don't have to agree, but I just want to make sure there's complete clarity when we vote on this, Mayor. Thank you.
Mayor, may I respond to that?
Sure.
So, Councilmember, I'm not saying that warrants or other sort of criminal activity that's happening, that we would somehow not allow officers to do their job. I'm simply saying, do not use this database to create a criminal, to create the fact that you're able to say that there is a bed somewhere, and the person should be ticketed for that reason. So, all the things you said, I think, you know, that's what officers are out there to do. So I would not prevent anything that they're doing now. I'm simply saying that I wouldn't be supportive of creating a database simply for the excuse to be able to ticket or get people out of the, wherever they're at.
Okay, I'd like to see what that is, because I think you and I fall on the same line when it comes to, you know, you don't want to see government intrusion into people's lives. I get it, and creating databases always concerned me. Facial recognition, I think, concerns us, you know? So, if you can approach it and let me look at it that way, I might be supportive of that. But we fall on the same line when it comes to...
Yes, and, and I think, Councilmember DeCecio, and I think that's part of the reason why I think it's a good idea to continue that item for another week, just so that there can be questions answered, and that we can all come in on, on the same page next week, and be able to approve this item. Thank you, Mayor.
I, I'm fine with, oh, sorry, I'm fine with that, then, on my end, Mayor.
Wonderful. Councilwoman Williams.
Since it's going to come back next week, I want to understand if you are talking about homeless in encampments, or individuals that live on the street? Because there's a big difference. Many of the individuals do not desire to go to a shelter or to look for a bed, and I don't think, I'm pretty sure the police do not take any action against them. But I want to make sure that's not included in this language. An encampment, a large encampment, okay, but individuals, I have a little problem with messing with them. So could staff explain that when they bring it back next week, please?
Mayor, Councilmember Williams, yes. Staff will brief the council on this item and be ready next week to explain that as well.
Thank you. All those in favor of the motion to continue this item till July 1st, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion to continue passes unanimously. We next go to Item 35, which is CARES Act emergency funding to the Arizona Community Action Association. Vice Mayor, do we have a motion?
Yes, we have a motion to approve Item 35.
Second. Councilmember comments?
Mayor?
Councilmember DeCecio, followed by Councilwoman Pastor.
Thank you. One of those other clarity moments. So the council granted this group wildfire $30 million, and now of the $30 million, they're giving $2 million back, correct?
One moment, we're getting Ms. Franklin is coming forward, just to my councilman.
Okay, then, I'll just give you a second question on that. I'm sorry, I interrupted. The answer's yes?
No, it's Councilwoman Pastor, and what you're saying is correct, because it's on Page 49.
Right. I'm just trying to get some things out there, is all. Thank you for that. And then, of that $2 million to staff, why is this occurring? You know, what's happening with that $2 million? And why did we, it's rare that we get anything back, but why is that?
Thank you, Councilman. Ms. Franklin will answer.
Mayor Geigo and Councilman DeCecio, I apologize, I want to make sure I understand your question correctly. I was following up on that other item. Were you asking, is your question that the city of Phoenix allocated a significant dollar amount to wildfire, and now of that dollar amount that the city of Phoenix allocated to wildfire, that the city of Phoenix Human Services Department is now receiving $2 million? Your question is, is that the question?
Yes, it is perfectly, thank you.
Sure.
And the question is why?
Sure, sure. So, Mayor Geigo and Councilman DeCecio, we are one of several community action agencies throughout the state of Arizona, and so wildfire is an association that is responsible for representing community action agencies as well as fighting poverty. As a community action agency within the city of Phoenix, if you will, the Human Services Department is wildfire, and in their efforts to get that 20-something million dollars that the city allocated to wildfire to spend as it relates to eviction, prevention, mortgage, utility assistance, then is giving us back, if you will, as the community action agency in the city of Phoenix that money. So, an example could be, you know, CPLC could potentially be receiving some money from wildfire of this $20 million. We are just, as a community action agency, taking a portion of that and spending it.
But why, why would we have just have kept it from the start?
Mayor, Councilman DeCecio, members of the council, we contracted with wildfire for the entire amount to administer the program, and so the entire $22 million, outside of the $2 million for administration, went to them directly. They're, they're allocating to 10 different agencies to administer the funding and track it, and ensure that they're securing and paying the utility and water bills for us. So they will be overseeing it, similar to what they do currently as the Community Action Agency Association for the state. So more for ease and streamlined purposes to answer your question directly.
Okay, so we, and so just, you know, my antenna always goes up on stuff like this, because when you see this in the business community, it's basically a workaround to try to get around rules that are already in place or something like that. So, it just seems odd, because I've never seen that before. The city of Phoenix knew that, very unusual. So, do we have to follow the same CARES Act rules?
Mayor, Councilman DeCecio, members of the council, absolutely. We have to follow all of the same requirements that the other nine agencies administering the program will have to follow.
And wildfire has to do it as well, correct?
Yes.
So, all the requirements on them. It just seems a little odd, I'm going to be voting no, just because I feel uneasy about it, and it just, I've never seen that before. But those are my questions, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman, Councilwoman Pastor. Do you have additional questions?
Yeah, I have the exact same question. So my, my question is, why didn't we keep the 20 million, or, yeah, 20 million within our human service agency? I'm not really sure why we didn't keep it. We're paying an administrative cost to wildfire, so now, we paid an administrative cost for them to administer this, and then to give us 20 million back when we gave them 22 million? And I mean, I'm sorry, 2 million back, when we could have just administered it ourselves? So that's where I'm... I'm not really sure why we didn't keep it. Uh, we're paying an administrative cost to wildfire. So now we paid an administrative cost for them to administer this, and then to give us, uh, 20 million back when we gave them, um, 22 million. And I mean, I'm sorry, 2 million back, um, when we could have just administered it ourselves. So that's where I'm, uh, not understanding.
Mayor, Councilwoman Pastor, members of the council, we do not have the staffing capacity to administer 20 million dollars. The agencies that wildfire contracts with currently is agencies like CPLC and other agencies across the city that have the ability to reach some of the populations that we can't or don't reach. And we do not have enough staffing in human services to administer the 20 million dollars.
So I understand the 20 million, but why didn't we keep the 2 million? Um, so am I hearing that with this 2 million, that we have enough staff to administer it? Or wildfire is administering the utility, rent, and mortgage, and they're just paying us 2 million for those items?
Mayor, Councilwoman Pastor, members of the council, the 2 million dollars coming to human services, they will be administering that portion of the program. The remaining 20 million will be administered by the other nine agencies throughout the city. And wildfire will be overseeing and monitoring the entire program for the total 24 million.
And I have one more question. All the groups that, like CPLC and, and all the community action agencies, do they also receive money for administrative costs?
Mayor, Councilwoman Pastor, members of the council, yes, they get a prorated amount based on the amount of funding that they're taking for each of the agencies. It's, it's within the overall pot of money that you, you authorize as a part of this program?
No, I understand that, and, and I think this is where I had some difficulty with this, because, um, we have, as community, community action agencies, basically the city is going to charge, uh, 20% for overhead or for administrative costs through this 2, 2, my understanding is with this 2 million.
Yes. Mayor, Councilwoman Pastor, members of the council, the administration is all within the original 24 million, the 20%.
I understand that. So what I'm asking is, not only out of that 24, 22, wildfire takes a 20% cut, then you have these community action agencies also administering dollars out into the community, and they take a percentage of, uh, of administering. That's what I'm trying to figure out.
Mayor, Councilwoman Pastor, members of the council, no, it's all within the same. So I believe you authorized 20 million for the service side and 4 million for the administration? That 4 million is split up between all of the entities? So it's not an additional?
Okay, but, okay, so let's get clear. The 4 million that has been authorized, 4 million goes to wildfire, 20% of their administration cost goes to wildfire. Then I'll use another nonprofit agency, ABNC. They get, uh, they put in money, we can administer, uh, I don't know, a million dollars. Uh, out of the 4 million, we have this 20% administrative cost. So.
So Mayor, Councilwoman Pastor, members of the council, let me try to see if I understand what you're saying. Wildfire is not getting the entire 4 million, they're getting a portion of the 4 million, and then they're also allocating some of that 4 million to the agencies administering the program? So they are not taking, they're not taking the entire 20%?
Okay, so what I'm hearing from you is that 20% is shared amongst all the agencies?
Yes, the, the.
Out of the 4 million?
Yes.
So then, um, we're considered a community action agency, and so we are sharing, uh, part of the 4 million in administrative cost?
Yes, that's correct.
And plus, we get this additional 2 million?
The 2 million includes the administration. So when each agency is getting their awards, for example, if I'm getting 2 million, I have already worked with wildfire to determine contractually how much money I can spend. And then based on how much money I can spend, they're including the administration into that. So I believe, and I have Marsha sitting next to me, the 2 million award is not just the direct service, it includes the administration.
And how much is the cost for administration?
Mayor, Councilwoman Pastor, members of the council, Marsha is getting that information for you.
Mayor, may I ask, Councilwoman Pastor, may I just ask a question here while they're waiting?
Sure.
Those are amazing questions, and, but I don't think the staff is understanding what you're asking, because I understand it. You want to know, I mean, so we're giving 4 million dollars. The math is just not adding up, Deanna, just being respectful on that, too. I mean, Councilwoman Pastor has asked some really good questions here. They're keeping 4 million dollars. And then, oh, I'm sorry, what's that, Laura? Sorry.
I just said I'm smart.
You are. I mean, you've, you've been nailing it in the last several meetings on some of these meetings. I'm like, oh, my gosh, didn't even think of that. You know, not that I should, but they're brilliant. I mean, they're really good. So of the 22 million, uh, 4 million plus is going over to wildfire, correct?
Mayor, Councilman Decio, members of the council, there is a 4 million administrative allocation to the 24 million that you authorized. So it's 20 million for services, 4 million for administration. The entire 24 million is going to wildfire. They're allocating to the 10 agencies, a portion of program and a portion of admin, and then they're also getting a portion of admin. And that's all in that 4 million.
Right, but see the math, that, it, it, it's just not clear, and I'll explain why. Because the way you were describing it, it's like 4 million going to them, then of the proportionate amount that comes out to each of the different cities, or the different entities, we're going to be covering our administration, too. So I think that if you were to say, here's what everybody is getting, you might be better off. How much goes towards services, and then how much goes to administration? I think that's a simple question.
So in total, 20 million goes to services and 4 million goes to administration. We don't have the breakout by all 10, but if the council would like to continue this item as well, we will be happy to get that information in the next week.
I'd be fine with delaying it. Oh, go ahead, sorry.
Oh, sorry. And what I would like is, uh, in the future, just the breakdown of where all the CARES money is going to. And like example of this one, um, the breakdown as Councilmember Decio, the administrative, and then the service of what really, what, who is really receiving the money now? Because that's been one of my, my challenges or difficulties in this whole process, as we're paying administrator costs everywhere, and how much money really gets to the community?
Understood.
So I would like to know, um, these, uh, agenda reports, the breakdown of where, what the administrative cost is, and who is, and the services they're receiving.
Understood.
Thank you.
Yeah, me too. Those are amazing. That's perfect.
I'm, I'm fine with the vote. Kate, you're talking, you're on mute.
Mayor, I think you're on mute. We're not hearing you.
It's 22 million. So the 4 million would be 26 million.
Mayor, Councilwoman Pastor, it's 24 million total, of, of, of which the city of Phoenix is one of the agencies that's administering the money. And so you have to think of it as, we're in a position where we are both a grantor. As a corporation, we received CARES money, and we're giving that CARES money as a corporation, in one case to wildfire, to administer a program of utility and rent assistance. Then our human services department serves as an agency, similar to nine other agencies in the community. And so as one of those 10 agencies, our human services department then receives some money to get to the community. So it's, it's confusing in the sense that we're, we're on both sides of that. We're the grantor as a corporation, and we're also, uh, an agency, administering agency as part of that network with wildfire.
Yes, but I think it's just confusing. We could have just kept the 2 million and administered it.
Thank you. I think part of the issue may have been that we wanted to use existing systems and people who are experienced with utility aid, and so that, usually the money is not coming from the city, it's often coming from the federal government, although we are occasionally, I think, passing through federal dollars. So we do have a motion on the table, and it's my understanding we are ready to move forward with a motion to approve. Roll call. Decio?
Uh, no, Mayor. I'd like to have Marsha make sure she tells us what the amount is on that legal stuff, too. Thank you, Mayor.
Garcia?
Yes.
Nowakowski?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Waring?
No.
Williams?
Yes.
Guardado?
Yes.
Gallego?
Yes.
Passes 7-2. Thank you. I am going to take items 36 and 61 together. Both are related to early childhood. Appreciate all that our partners and our city staff are doing to serve our entire community, including our youngest residents during this difficult time. Um, these items will help us move forward with our partnership with First Things First and Family Resource Centers. Tough being a parent at any time, but during COVID-19, even more difficult. And First Things First can help us with things like virtual case management, development milestones, even fun classes. We're also supporting and investing in Head Start and our preschool programs, and these programs are so vital, providing additional resources during COVID, so valuable. So I want to thank everyone who has been involved. Uh, Vice Mayor, I would entertain a motion on items 36 and 61.
Yes, I will make a motion to approve items 36 and 61.
Second. Any additional councilmember comments or questions? Roll call. Decio?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Nowakowski?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Waring?
Yes.
I apologize, uh, Councilmember Waring, was that a yes or a no?
Yes.
Thank you. Williams?
Yes.
Guardado?
Yes.
Gallego?
Yes.
Passes 9-0.
Woo-hoo! Waring. That's the thing, we're all parents.
We next move to item 60, award for redevelopment of Deck Park Vista apartments. Vice Mayor, do we have a motion?
Yes, motion to approve item 60.
Second.
We, um, have three members of the, uh, two, of the public to address us on this one. We will begin with Sissy Veterans, followed by Diana DeeDee Devine. Mayor, Sissy Veterans is not on the line. Wonderful, then we will go to DeeDee, followed by Joe Keeper, our, our great partners on this endeavor.
Hello?
Hello?
Hi. Uh, hello, Mayor and Council. And I just want to say that Native American Connections is always happy to participate with the city of Phoenix in really trying to, um, fill our housing gap for all residents of the city of Phoenix. We did respond to the Deck Park proposal and are very excited to have been awarded that, um, that contract to redevelop the Deck Park. Uh, we're proposing, uh, 201 units. We think that's the right mix of units at that site. It triples the size of the units that we can serve right in the downtown area for both affordable and attainable units. We're going to ma, uh, bring, uh, a leverage of the low-income housing tax credit program to the site for the construction of the site. Probably the best, uh, use of tax credits is when you're building, um, using wood frame construction, and so that's what got us to the number of units that we think are the most cost-effective, to build a maximum amount of units to keep them affordable, um, for the residents in downtown Phoenix. We are, uh, as you know, we have over 1,000 units of housing in the Phoenix metropolitan area, and so, um, we've already been reached out to some of the residents there that, um, we've reassuring them. I think that's one of our strengths as Native American Connections, to make sure that everybody knows that, um, we're gonna, um, we're not gonna, uh, demo a property and make somebody homeless to build an affordable housing project, to make sure that everybody has, uh, those who want to, uh, be relocated, or those who, who might want to go into some of these downtown properties. Oh, I think I met my limit. I'll let Joe pick up from there.
Wonderful. Joe?
Uh, Mayor and councilmembers, hopefully you can hear me okay.
Yes.
Excellent. Well, um, it's always hard to follow DeeDee, as everyone knows, so I'll try my best here. But just, uh, kind of finishing off, you know, the, the housing continuum choices that Native American Connections provides, I mean, yesterday we, we, we talked about homelessness. You know, we operate, um, senior housing sites in addition to workforce family that are a combination of mixed income and mixed use. So we're really excited with this opportunity to be partnership with the neighborhood and the city, to redevelop really what might be one of the last opportunities to create more affordability in downtown Phoenix, given where the market has gone over the last couple years. Just excited to get started on it. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your partnership. Uh, that concludes our public comment on this item. Councilmember Garcia, this is in your district.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I want to express support for this project. I know the project has, uh, has had a long, complicated, a little bit of complicated history, but with the leadership of our housing director, Cindy, I think we've been able to find a great partner in Native American Connections, who's nationally recognized as a leader in this area. I have had meetings at the site itself, I've literally walked through, talking to all the neighbors, and I want to assure them that Housing Department and all of us will be taking care of them, will be making sure that they get moving fees, that they find a place, whether it's a new permanent home or a temporary home, as they're able to come back, uh, to the property once this, this project is fully developed. And, and I think Native American Connections will take care of those folks. Um, we have amazing residents there at Deck Park Vista who deserve and, and the support and, and the commitment, um, from, from our, uh, from both our staff and, and from the community at large. So I think that community growing is going to be better for all of us. And obviously, to be able to maintain affordability and support, uh, for folks maybe that don't have a home, to be able to live downtown is, is a great deal. This redevelopment is part of our overall progress on increasing, on increasing the amount of affordable housing. We've heard, you know, this whole year and with the presentation, a couple of meetings ago from Cindy and the housing team, that we do have a deficit in housing, and I hope this, along with many more projects, will continue to put a dent on that. And so with that, I move, uh, to, to pass item 16.
Second. Mayor, we, we already had a, a motion and a second. Oh, that's right. Any additional comments? Roll call. Decio?
Yeah.
Garcia?
Yes.
Nowakowski?
Nowakowski.
Yes.
Pastor. Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
No.
Williams.
Yes.
Guardado.
Yeah, I want to explain my vote.
Please.
So I just want to thank Cindy so much for leading the charge in this. Affordable housing is incredibly important. And we, you know, we're very excited to have you on the team and leading this with us. We see the need, we see the numbers, and I'm going to be voting yes on this. Thank you.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes 8-1.
We next move to item 64, Phoenix Central Station. Vice Mayor, do we have a motion?
Yes, motion to approve item 64, amend business terms for Phoenix Central Station, 300 North Central Avenue.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. There was a member of the public to address us on this item, but no longer. Councilmember comments? Councilwoman Pastor.
Mayor, this item was very important to me because this was one of the items, one of the last items that my dad was working on. And what is amazing was because at the time of the vote, there was a hotel that was going to be built. And there were several members in the community that did not want that hotel to be built. And I took, I took the vote because I thought the project was a great project and took a little hits and bruises, but I still think it's a great project. What I had asked, I had asked Chris Mackey in looking at this because we had a 5% workforce piece. I asked Chris if she could go back to speak to the person that received the award and if we could go to 10% in the workforce housing, because that's where the number is today. I believe, Chris, you can tell me what exactly the awardee has said. And then the other item I asked for was, in the contract, it says 10 years for workforce housing. I had then asked, is it possible to go to 15? So, Chris, I don't know what the answer is. This is what I asked before the meeting, so.
Mayor, Councilwoman Pastor, thanks for the question. And yes, thank you for reaching out to me before the meeting and asking that question. I did reach out to the developer, Metastar Manja Huarani, and we did talk through your request of the 10% in workforce housing. As you'll remember, this is a project that isn't receiving any city incentives. And over our property that's valued at approximately $13 million, over the 99-year term, it'll put approximately $172 million into our public transit, our public transit system. So that's the community benefit that we had negotiated. Mr. Huarani, though, did admire your request and has agreed to move to 7% of workforce housing, so 25 units now, because without the hotel, there's additional high-density residential market rate units. So he's agreed to go to the 7%, which is 25 units. He also has agreed to your request of 15 years for those 25 units.
Well, that is good news. And I think this is a great project and we saved our transit area and our transportation area and our transit runs through downtown. And I think this will be a benefit to our city. So thank you so much.
Councilman Nowakowski.
Mayor, this is another great project in District 7, something that we've been working on for a while. Chris, I just want to give you the kudos. You always make things happen. We had a lot of hiccups on this one because we had a transit center, not just a normal transit center, but our main transit center where it was a bus transit center plus a major hub for our light rail. And, you know, we were able to work out with the developer that they would keep the transit center there. We talked about all kinds of retail space that we need for the community. People wanted to make sure that the retail was there. And then we had some concerns about the hotel and we were able to work that out. I wasn't able to support it at first, but now that they took the hotel component out of it and they brought in more workforce housing design to it and more family resident rental units, what a great project. It's really, once again, a Team Phoenix approach where we brought everybody together, the community, our staff, the developer, and made this wonderful project. It's going to be one of the jewels of downtown. I think people are going to come in from other cities just to see how you can incorporate not only the buses, but the light rail and all the retail and families together at one place. So once again, Chris, thank you so much for your patience, for able to pull everyone together and not pulling out your hair. Thank you. And I'll be voting yes on this.
Thank you, Councilman. Roll call.
DeCiccio.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
Nowakowski.
Heck, yeah.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark. Waring. Waring.
No.
Williams.
Yes.
Guardado.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes 8-1.
We next move to item 82, rezoning application for Northwest corner of 25th Street and Broadway.
Mayor.
Yes.
Do we, do we need to do the omnibus first?
I believe we got the rest of them in the original omnibus, but we'll turn to our city attorney to see if we need a...
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, those other items were included in the omnibus at the beginning of the meeting.
Okay, perfect.
So, uh... Go ahead.
The motion to approve item 82, rezoning application for Northwest corner of 25th Street and Broadway Road.
Second.
Mayor.
Councilwoman Williams.
I've had many emails and calls, but I'm not going to be able to put the motion. This is an area that I worked on with Councilman Good and many of the neighbors to do an overlay to really build a neighborhood. And I know we put tens of millions of dollars in there to stabilize it. And they are very opposed to this and I honor the recommendation.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I have heard similar feedbacks. We have four members of the public, including the applicant and the applicant's representative, here to address the council. I will begin with the owner of the property, Kenya Connor.
Good afternoon, Mayor and councilmembers. I hope everyone can hear me.
Yes, we can.
Again, my name is Kenya K. Connor. I have owned the property for three years, proudly paid taxes on the property. I have proudly paid the utility bills on the property for the last three years. I have served this community for close to 18 years. I am trying to start a respectable business and I'm looking for your support. As of date, there has been no logical reason why this business isn't, we won't be able to move forward. I have heard about the overlay and I do know that there is some resistance there. But we have won the village support, we have won the planning commission support, and we're hoping that we also win your support to move forward. This project will bring jobs to the community, revenue to the city, and we're looking forward to revitalize this community. It would be an essential part of this city and not only bring revenue from the residents of the city, but from the entire state as well. So we're looking forward to revitalizing this area and also bringing jobs and training to this area. So we're hoping that we win your support today and continue the growth in South Phoenix. Thank you.
Do we have Shelley Smith?
Yes, Mayor.
Pastor, can you hear me? It looks like it just muted again.
Hello.
Ah, now we have you. Go ahead, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I am a member, and I was born and raised in the community. I'm a pastor in the community also and a neighbor. I live in the community and the history of this building has a long past. And one of the things I look at about, we have, the council before and members of the community that had started the Four Corners Project. And it's a great idea, it's a great venture, but at one time it was stopped. It had actually stopped. And I look at all the failures we've had with the building itself, at people in the community that have stepped in and opened a business there with a daycare center, a community center, and they have literally stopped because they had no true investment in the building, just an investment in the community. And one of the things I look at is, if this passes today, this will bring forth a revitalization of the Four Corners Project to bring other developers in the community to develop where the old fire station was, bringing a vision for this community. Because right now, the Four Corners plan was actually a great plan, but if you have no one with a vision and to continue investing their time in it, it won't go anywhere. And as I told the community before, the city had slated part of the Four Corners property on Southwest corner of Broadway and 24th Street and sold. That really put a damper on, you actually need to complete the Four Corners Project itself. But I duly support this project here at 25th Street and Broadway because it actually will start the revitalization project, process in our community. And I hope that you will approve it because this will bring success for other projects and people to come in our community and businesses to move forward with development of this project in the corner itself. Thank you.
Thank you. Twana will be followed by Jeff Stevens.
Hi, oh, sorry. All right, sorry, can you hear me okay?
Beautifully.
Awesome. Good evening, Mayor and Council, City Council members. My name is Twana Brunson. I am a South Phoenix Village resident, member of the Broadway Heritage Neighborhood Association. I am a homeowner and I'm the president of Broadway Estates Block Watch Association. I've attended countless meetings with South Mountain Phoenix Village, Phoenix Planning Commission, Councilman Garcia, and other people that reside outside of the community that support this request. However, Broadway Estates Block Watch Association, former Councilman Michael Johnson, Cody Williams, Community Excellent Project, Greg Brunel, and yes, I did say Greg Brunel and Mike Johnson, both support this agenda. They support, oppose, well, I apologize, they support a proposal of Agenda Item 82. Not only do they oppose it, but I've obtained over 600 opposing signatures from residents in this community that also oppose this measure. And yes, I did state 600. I submitted the opposing petitions on Monday to be entered into the record. Hundreds of residents like myself have made 30-year investments into our homes and the vast majority of our residents are against having this type of business in our community. Councilman Garcia, we are very disappointed that you appear to be considering this request. Every conversation I've had with you up until recent, I have appreciated the fact that I felt like you had a service heart for this community. But this is very disappointing. Our community has worked extremely hard to ensure zoning ordinance 6E, Four Corner Overlay, was put into place to protect our community from unwanted, excuse me, unwanted businesses, such as the proposed business. We ask that you support the residents and oppose this permit. Respectfully served either way, we see you, we will see you at the polls because I will ensure the community remembers how you voted today. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Jeff will be our final speaker on this item.
Mayor and Council, I hope you can hear me all right.
We can.
My name is Jeff Stevens and I'm working with K. Connor. I'm an architect and I'm also, in 1999, wrote the overlay zoning for this area. And just to give you a little background, a little history on it, this is a C2 area. And C2 is light industrial, light, excuse me, commercial. And it's used as a buffer to, for the surrounding neighborhood and surrounding residential areas. Under this, as we wrote this, and I wrote this with DeeDee Brennan at CBAE, and we together decided that a use like a funeral home would be allowed, but we would do it under a special use permit. That's why we're here today. This thing has been abandoned now for 20 years and has been nothing but a drug hangout and a other nefarious goings-on have happened over here in the last 20 years. We're hoping that with this project, we will not only renovate this building, but also the lot next door and combine a parking lot and also try to, as others have alluded to, jumpstart this whole area down here where nothing really has happened except for a community center down at 24th and Broadway, probably about 12 years ago, maybe longer. So we're hoping that this will go because this was written into the Four Corners Overlay zoning as an active part of the C2 area as a buffer for the surrounding residential area. And they wanted businesses, no pun intended... And they wanted businesses, uh, no pun intended, that were quiet and that could come in and not disrupt anybody or anything. And we certainly believe that Kay's building is going to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the public comment on this item. Vice Mayor.
Yes, I, I just had a question for, for Alan. Alan, given the comments that we just heard from the gentleman, um, right now, so it's my understanding that the community will continue to have a say on special permits in this area because of the four corners. I understand the overlay is clear that certain projects are allowed through a special permit and that other projects are not. Can you just, can you just clarify that for us, please? And if we can just put that on the record?
Sure. Uh, thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor. Uh, this particular property is zoned C-two with a Four Corners Overlay Zoning District along with the Rio Salado, uh, interim overlay zoning district. And those overlay zoning districts change some of the base, uh, C-two zoning standards. And so, uh, C-two zoning districts throughout the city would allow for a mortuary use to go in by right without a, a rezoning action, uh, by the mayor and council. However, when the Four Corners Overlay, uh, was developed with the community and the discussions in the early two thousands and then adopted by council, they debated, uh, exactly what types of uses they wanted to have in the overlay at the time. And what came out of that was that a mortuary use, uh, could be a use that would be permitted within there, but it wasn't going to be a by right use. It would be an individual look that would come through a special permit request and go to the council to be evaluated and then approved to allow that particular use. Uh, and so that's the way the, the overlay was set up. And that's what the applicant is here, uh, today, that they brought forward an application that was approved by a six to four vote from the South Mountain Village Planning Committee, approved by a nine to zero vote of the Planning Commission, uh, to request the special permit and the underlying uses within the C-two zoning district.
Great. Thank you. Appreciate it.
I think it is important, though, to note that the community has had a robust debate about whether a mortuary was important before, under the leadership of Cody Williams. The community decided that they did not want a mortuary in the area. So this is very much a debate that we have had before. I want to strongly disagree with Mr. Stevens' characterization that there's just, this is just a drug hangout and that there's nothing happening in this community. You got to come back and visit. There are wonderful restaurants, great childcare facilities, robust churches, the Key's Community Center. The city has invested in upgrading parks facilities, repaving in the area. This has been a robust effort. We have had significant conversations about what type of development that we want to see in this area and community members have showed up over and over again. Uh, part of that has led to multiple nonprofit partners, including FSL, making important investments in housing. So to say nothing is happening but drugs is deeply, deeply inaccurate. Uh, the great work that our Block Watch and Neighborhood Association leaders are doing is important to me. I value it. For me, an important moment was Councilman Williams, who, who served this area, telling me, if you think that a mortuary is going to be catalytic to the, your vision of what type of development you want to see in this corridor, then support it. But otherwise, keep the commitments to residents that have been made over decades. So I will be standing with the Broadway Estates Block Watch and voting no on this item. Councilmember Garcia.
Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. And, and I think, um, this is, this is a tough case. This is, I've learned a lot through, through this, this case. We spent a lot of time on it. Um, I want to first acknowledge the amazing generational work that has been done uh, in what is called the Four Corners area. Uh, this area, which is a mile from my home, has been invested in, you're right. The housing has been invested, but it still continues to need a lot of support. And so I've literally walked this property, Mayor. It's, it's been vacant for over a decade and, and, and there is things there that, that need to be fixed. Um, the property we are, are considered for special permit today has a long history itself. It was once a market. It was later a community space. And like I said, it's unfortunately been vacant, uh, for over a decade. Um, I do not take this decision lightly. I have sat in numerous conversations and a lot of meetings, like Twana and others have said, um, with people for and against this permit. Um, I want to first assure that making this decision will not impact the, the question that the Vice Mayor asked. It will not impact or set a different standard for any, uh, future similar requests in the area. They would still all have to go through this same process. Um, I've come to appreciate the applicant's determination and commitment to the community in investing her own money and, and putting her children's future and wanting to develop in this area. I think it is important to support black-owned business, especially in this area. And so I appreciate Kay's work and, and what she's done and, and what we've asked her to do, which is ask, actually go through this process twice. Um, after the Village Planning Committee and Planning Commission's approving this for a second time, um, I feel it's the right thing to permit, the permit to be granted. And I, and that's, I'm supporting it. Um, as a representative of the district, uh, I, I think that area still needs a lot of work. Um, I also wanted to say to those who were against this special permit um, that those that are against and for it, that our priority is to continue to work in this area and more specifically with the Twenty Fourth Street and Broadway property that is owned by Neighborhood Services Department. We have spoken to staff, to Alan, to Spencer, um, to our Housing Department. We're, we're going to be moving forward with the process and community input to hopefully finally get something done in that area um, that can both address affordable housing and the commercials, commercial space that's needed in the area. Um, I, I lastly, and I know Twana, you're probably really upset at me right now, but I want to recognize your work. Uh, Twana has worked tirelessly and, and harder than anyone I've seen, um, on a case, uh, this entire year that I've been in office. Um, I, I've seen her work door by door, be at every meeting. Um, on this issue and, and this situation, we're, we're having to, to disagree. I really do think that there's a lot of work to be done in this area. I believe you have the heart and determination to make sure that, that this community, our community, is better. And I really hope we can work together with yourself and a lot of the folks that came in through the investment that the city made in the housing that's there, uh, to make sure that the rest of the Four Corner area is prosperous and we get what we need. Um, again, at this time, I will be supporting Ms. Kay and, and will be there to support her business and the rest of the development of the Four Corners area. Thank you.
Councilman DeCecio.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, I'm also going to be supporting the case. I'm going to be supporting the council member for the district. Uh, you know, as a general rule on the council here, we do support the council member in that area because they're supposed to know what's really happening. I wasn't aware of Cody and Michael and others who are friends. I like them a lot. But, you know, those were also a long time ago, so I don't know. I haven't heard anything from them as to whether or not they would be opposing this or not. The other part of it deals with funeral homes. I mean, they're the least intrusive of any use you could ever put in, whether it's next, I mean, if you drive by, you will see many, many funeral homes right next door to homes. And I haven't heard a single argument up here on the council other than, hey, they didn't like it the, as previous elected officials, so I'm not going to like it either. I mean, if someone could, I'd like to hear what a, a cogent argument would be opposing a use like this. I've never heard us oppose a use like this that is so low intensity even though it was right next to homes. So why, especially if the property, you know, just to defend the individual that spoke earlier too, I didn't hear him say that the entire area was full of drug users and places like that. He was very specific to the property itself. And that may or may not be the case. I don't know. I mean, that does happen when you have vacant lots. Vacant lots are literally, no matter where you're at in the city of Phoenix, or actually in the country, they are magnets to uses that people wouldn't like to have next door to them, uh, until they're developed out. So could someone present, present at least an, an argument as to why this is a bad land use? Especially when it was allowed and the special use permit was already anticipated ahead of time? Other than you don't like it?
I, I believe Twana is still online, uh, but they, they submitted a variety of comments to all of our offices, including, uh, traffic patterns, effect on neighboring development. So, um, for our staff, if we could unmute Twana and, and she could address the concerns.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that. Uh, I can give you multiple reasons, sir. First and foremost, to say that nothing's been going on in the area. I am a newer homeowner. I've only had my home for two years. Uh, but as the mayor stated, traffic, uh, traffic, um, issues is a reason. But more so than anything, there's unintended consequences that could come about from allowing this. And I do, I did hear earlier that it was stated that everything would come across, uh, it would still have to go through this process. But the point of the matter is, is that I've, I've spoken with hundreds of people. I've talked with hundreds of people who do not want this. And, and the reasons, the reasons are, one of the reasons are this, this applicant has no interest in helping this community whatsoever. She is not vested in this. She's not a resident of this area. She doesn't plan to support in this area. Uh, she's, she's flat out told us at meetings that she would like to use the, the building, the facility for pretty much anything and everything except for a mortuary. So chapel uses, um, community meetings, things of that nature. She's, she's stating that she's going to bring jobs to the community. She may be able to bring about four or five jobs to the community. May, may, anyone that knows how a mortuary is operated knows that the individuals there have dual, dual functions or more. Excuse me. But, but the point of the matter is, is we have a community center less than a block away from the building where we currently hold meetings, well, up until the COVID. Uh, we have thirty funeral homes and I purposely limited the mileage to within ten miles of this business, of this proposed business. So it's destined, most businesses, and I'm sure you all know this, fail within the first five years. Us as homeowners, we, we do not, we've made a thirty-year investment into our homes. And so we don't want someone that's just coming into the area to make a profit and, and then leave us high and dry. She's made no, she, she spoke specifically at the South Phoenix Village Planning Committee and advised when she was asked, uh, what financing options she would provide, she said there would be none. People have insurance policies. But this, this area is mostly low, low-income individuals. Uh, now, there's newer homeowners like myself where, where we have, you know, uh, medium incomes. But that wouldn't be something that would benefit our community. We're looking for retail businesses and things like that. Thank you for the opportunity to speak again, Mayor. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Um, to be fair, we should also give the applicant or the applicant's representative an opportunity to also provide additional input. So, um, we, if, if staff could unmute, I guess we'll begin with the applicant and then if the applicant prefers her representative, that works for me as well.
Yes, Mayor.
Thank you very much. I've heard that Mrs. Brunson, uh, said that the building would not be used but for anything else but for the funeral home. Since the beginning of the project, I've welcomed the community into this project and said and welcomed the community in. This building, this project is community-friendly. Um, this building, this project has always welcomed into, uh, the, uh, this building. Uh, we want to revitalize because this building has a lot of history in it and we know that. Um, we want to welcome the, uh, the leaders back into this, uh, building for workshops and, uh, whatever else we want, they want to use the building for. Um, the, uh, the business itself can reach out to the locals uh, surrounding and, uh, have at least twenty-one jobs available. Drivers, counselors, ministers, transporters, uh, interns, uh, funeral directors. Funeral home itself has a lot of jobs available. And the longer you're open, the more jobs that, uh, can produce in that community. Um, Ms. Twana has said a lot of things and, and I'm sure that I'm, I, my time is not going to be used as going back and forth with her. Um, give me the opportunity to open the funeral home. Uh, it is an essential part of anyone's community. And I do know that had I been open a year ago, this is a business that, uh, could have remained open during this pandemic and could have supplied jobs. It would have remained open and it could have supported the community during this time. And so, um, you know, this is that type of business. It, it's, it's not a business that can be closed down by, uh, government. It's, it's the type of business that can only support the community and government. And so, um, I've been here. I've been supporting, um, the, the, the county. I've been supporting the city. Um, I'm honored to do that. And, uh, uh, one community cannot have enough services. Um, you know, yes, there are community, uh, there's a community building, uh, half a block up. But that community business, that community building, uh, building is not open twenty-four seven. A funeral home is open twenty-four seven for someone in need. And so, um, I, I thank everybody for their support. Not to mention, there is, uh, a building on Twenty Fourth Street right now with a, a building full of supporters. So I want to thank everyone at the Prince Hall Building. Um, there, there was people that could not speak, could not get connected. Frederick Jacobs, uh, could not get connected. He was registered to vote today. And also, uh, Camila Shabazz was registered to vote and something happened. And I want to thank everybody that was registered to vote and could not get on and thank all of the supporters. Um, so I, I did hear that there was a hundred and then two hundred. And, uh, I, I do know that I myself have went door to door, have had campaign, mailbox campaigns and have had several neighborhood meetings and opened it up to the community, mayor and council members. And there are never, from the opposing side, more than ten or twelve people at any time. And when those ten or twelve people come, they always change their mind. So I thank you so very much for the extra time and I'm, I'm hoping that you will support this project.
The city received, uh, today or on the council agenda packet, three comments in opposition and two in support. Councilwoman Pastor.
Alan. Um, this overlay was passed in nineteen ninety-nine? Am I correct or correct me if I'm wrong?
Mayor, Councilwoman Pastor, it was passed in either nineteen ninety-nine, two thousand, very early, uh, time, late ninety-nine, early two thousand.
Okay. And is this, this isn't Target B, correct, or?
Mayor, Councilwoman Pastor, uh, it is a, an area within, uh, Target Area B, which is a redevelopment area that is, is much larger. Um, and so it's still a part of that, that redevelopment plan. This is consistent with that plan. The zoning overlay is something that is different and that just deals with the, the commercial properties that are fronting along Broadway Road and kind of both east and west of Twenty Fourth Street. There's a separate overlay for South Phoenix Village and Target Area B that deals with some design standards for residential, but this property is not within that area.
Okay. So it, yeah, it's, it's not in that area, but it, it is, uh, close to Target B because I was, I knew intimately Target B. Target B. And so that's why I was asking those questions. The, the second question is regarding overlays, since it's nineteen years, I think, nineteen years. My question is that in overlays, how do they get revised or re-looked at, re-analyzed in today's moment or society, what we're living in today? What is that process?
So Mayor, council members, and Councilwoman Pastor, the, the overlay process is one that's very time-intensive from a staff perspective, because you have to work with all of the, the property owners who own the land as well as the larger community and what they would like to see. And so it's done via staff effort and working with the community. We have not undertaken any overlays or significant planning efforts like this in quite some time, because we just don't have the resources. Back when the department used to, to do some of these larger efforts, we had, you know, one village planner for each area, and then they would take on some of these additional, you know, projects, where currently we have two and, and three villages that are staffed by one, you know, village planner. So they don't have the, the additional resources to really go through and go through a significant effort. And so that's, that's been a challenge in trying to address some of these older ones and some concerns about, you know, what could happen in trying to modernize them.
Okay. But there is the possibility to, for that request, if it's requested by the community or, or by the community to, let's, let's look at the overlay or the village.
So Mayor, Councilwoman Pastor, there would be, if there was a request from the council to, to do that, staff would try and fit that into, you know, our work program. But it is something we'd try and do and help to make happen. But there, there is some, you know, resource issues there, and I want to be upfront and honest about that so that everyone understands. We're happy to try and help, but we just don't have a significant amount of resources to do those things.
Okay. And then my third question is regarding the mortuary in the past. I'm not sure if you know the history of why it was denied in the past, or could you explain some of the history?
Mayor, Councilwoman Pastor, it's my understanding from, I've heard from Councilman Johnson, who obviously represented that area, that in the past, there was a proposed mortuary in that area. I don't know that it ever came forward with a vote. What I had heard was that that parcel ended up being purchased by the city, and there was community concerns about the, the mortuary. I don't know if, if, you know, that was, was what happened in terms of, of that property being purchased. The bulk of that land was purchased through federal monies under CDBG grants to eliminate slum and blight. So it wouldn't have been something that the city would have been able to use that money to buy a parcel because they didn't want some other type of use. It would have been used to eliminate a parcel that had some slum and blight effects on the community, of which there were a number of them in that area, hence the, the overlays and the Community Excellence Project and others, working for a number of years to try and revitalize that area.
Okay, thank you. I know that area really well. I worked, I've worked all over the place, Phoenix, but especially in that area, I worked at South Mountain Community College and know that street, know all those streets very well in the sense of moving, coming and going. And I worked very closely at the time with Keys Community Center. Keys Community Center is no longer there, and as, when they left, it's just been a building that people have come in, come out, come in, come out. And there's never been any type of stabilization, I guess is what I want to try to say, and consistency with the building. And so I understand both sides and can see both sides, but I will be supporting the councilmen on this item.
Mayor.
Councilman DeCicio.
Just a quick question, Ellen, too. Are these overlays even legal anymore?
Mayor, Councilman DeCicio, they are legal. The city has the authority to do a zoning overlay. However, because of Proposition 207 that went into effect, the overlay is something that you wouldn't be able to reduce uses that a property owner had unless that property owner consented to that reduction. And so we can still do them, but they are, are more additive than, than restrictive. And so if you look at the Four Corners overlay, what was done with that was taking out some uses to restrict them, to do more what the community wanted than what C2 zoning districts allow throughout the rest of the city. And a brand-new, start-from-scratch overlay like that would be something that the city could not do unless each of those property owners signed a Prop 207 waiver. However, we could go back in and, and update that because what is there and restrictive today was on the books prior to, to that law. So anything that we'd be looking at doing would have to be making it easier for folks to develop in that particular area to entice some additional private investment, to try and, and make happen what the community has long desired to happen.
And Mayor, just a couple more questions on that, because actually I helped draft 207 quite a few years ago on this. So you can, you cannot even diminish anyone's property value, correct, Ellen? I mean, just to be clear on that. So if the zoning category of C2 allows X, and I am pretty sure even carrying it forward, if you had a pass to overlay, you cannot still diminish their property values going forward. So if they've got a C2 on there and an overlay, how do you diminish someone's property value at that point, especially if they're, you said trade-offs. You can't do trade-offs in zoning, under 207 for sure.
So Mayor, Councilman DeCicio, the, the overlay process would be one that you'd be working with those property owners to, to have discussions about that to the, from the standpoint of maybe are there some uses they don't care about, but maybe they would like to have, you know, additional level of building height, for example, or something like that, that would be a trade-off as part of an overlay. But in general, you wouldn't be able to impose an overlay on someone's private property that diminished their value without them signing a waiver saying they were okay with, with that, you know, process. And that is what has inhibited a number of, of community folks who have wanted to do overlays since that time to address some of these issues, is that under state law, you cannot do it unless that property owner is willing to consent to, to the change.
I, I get that part. So did the property owner ever consent to giving up their rights prior to 207? I'm guessing not, correct?
Councilman DeCicio, Mayor, I, I don't believe that you can make the law retroactively apply to a council action that took place in two thousand, when the Prop 207, as I recall, wasn't passed until two thousand six, two thousand seven. So I don't think you could go back in time and, and make that claim. But there's lots of attorneys who will make lots of claims.
Right, exactly. But at least from my perspective, 207 was written so that people's property rights would be enacted, not enacted, intact from what they were allowed to do. The overlays were pretty much universally taken out of that. And that's something even the city of Phoenix, we've talked about, you're talking about going forward. I'm talking about actions going back for, backward. These overlays that are already over properties, whether it's this one or others, they're not, I, I don't believe that they're legal, but I'm not an attorney. That's something that would have to be argued in court. I'm just even wondering why she would, if that was the case, why she even needs to be here today? Because these overlays, as far as I'm concerned, are not even legal, even retrospectively. So that's just more of a statement. You don't need to answer that, Ellen. But I believe 207 was written that way so that if you're in a zoning category, those were your rights and they were granted to you, irrespective of, you know, an overlay saying you're, you can't have certain rights to that zoning category when everyone else has those. So that's just more of a comment. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Roll call.
DeCicio.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Williams.
No.
Guadado.
Mayor, would you explain my vote?
Please.
So I, I just wanted to say that I know that Councilmember Garcia has been hearing about this case over, for the last year, ever since that, that he's been in office. I know that he has done a lot, a lot of different meetings, talked to a lot of neighborhood, neighborhood leaders, different neighborhoods, different people. And I know that this is not, this is not an easy decision. These cases are always hard, hard to vote on. But today, I'm going to be voting yes on this. Thank you.
Gallego.
No.
Passes seven to two.
We next move to Item eighty-four and eighty-five, which are related cases. We will have one staff report at a public hearing, and then we will have separate motions. I will turn to Councilwoman Williams, who represents the area, to introduce the staff report. If you would like a staff report. We have no one on the phone to provide comments.
Okay, quick review.
Mayor, members of council, this is Alan Stevenson. I'll do a quick PowerPoint here that covers Item eighty-four and eighty-five. Then you can take public testimony on, obviously on both of those in separate motion. So Item eighty-four is the General Plan Amendment for the southwest corner of I-17 and Dixileta Drive. Item eighty-five is the related zoning case for it as well. The request is obviously the southwest corner of I-17 and Dixileta Drive. On the aerial, you see the, the area to be changed, which is in green for the General Plan Amendment. And the zoning case is just the more immediate corner of the southwest corner of Dixileta and I-17, but also includes the hill to the west of it. In this case, the general plan is mixed-use designation of various elements, and they are going to residential three-point-five to five dwelling units an acre, and removing the infrastructure phasing overlay to allow development in this parcel on the west side of I-17 here. It's sixty-four-point-eight-four acres. Staff does recommend approval per the Planning Commission. It is residential three-to-point-five-to-five dwelling units an acre for Lennar Homes to do a residential development. The zoning case that goes with this is C2, R3A, and R118 to R16 and R118 for that proposed Lennar single-family home development. There is a memo that came out yesterday that had some revised stipulations. Staff does recommend approval per that memo. You can see on this aerial, the C2, shown on this map, is the area that's going to the R16 residential for development. And then this area that is the hillside back to the west is an area that the applicant is dedicating as part of this zoning case to the Parks Department for inclusion as part of the Sonoran Preserve. And that is something that Councilwoman Williams, the Parks Department, and, and Planning Development Department of Lennar Homes have been working on for quite some time. And so the additional stipulations are to incorporate some of the items that Parks wanted as part of that donation. Here's the proposed site plan to show a single-family residential and what it would look like along that corridor. Staff does recommend approval of the General Plan Amendment per the Planning Commission recommendation, and the new stipulations from the memo from myself dated yesterday. In those new stipulations, there's three additional ones about access to that preserve area and a disclosure and requirements for the owners who will live there in the future to go use the trailheads that will be constructed and not walk in through their neighborhood into the, the preserve areas. With that, staff's happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from council? We will open the public hearing. We have Bill Lawley representing the applicant.
From Tiffany and Bosco, Mayor, members of the council, this is Ashley Marsh from Tiffany and Bosco, twenty-five twenty-five East Campbellback Road, for your record. Mr. Stevenson did a great job summarizing our request. Lennar Homes is very excited to be bringing this community online, and as part of that to be donating the Middle Vista Mountain, a hundred-and-twenty-acre hillside donation. We've incorporated that into the zoning request so that that mountain can be donated. This is a, a downzoning from commercial to residential. And we're very excited to have worked with staff. Thank them very much, Mr. Stevenson and his team, and the Parks team to work out stipulations that met everyone's needs. We're happy to answer any questions at this time. And again, thank staff for their hard work on this case.
Thank you. We will close the public hearing, and I will turn to Councilwoman Williams for comments and a motion on first eighty-four.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank developer, staff, everyone involved. We've been working on this for quite a while. It's very important that we continue to get the hillsides donated. I am very excited about this. The number of units, number is lower than what it was before. I think it's going to be excellent, so I move to approve, per the Planning Commission's approval and adopt the related ordinance.
Mayor and council, I would just clarify for the record that for the general plan, it's a related resolution. The zoning case has the ordinance attached.
Thank you. Any council member comments?
Is it that one I said?
Exactly. Adopt the rated, so we will be voting on Councilwoman Williams' motion to approve and adopt the related resolution. Roll call.
DeCicio.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Guadado.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
We next move to Item eighty-five, a related case. Councilwoman Williams.
Thank you, Mayor. I, Ellen, you may have to read that motion that says, the memo for the Planning Department, Planning Director, for the three additional stipulations. But I, basically, I'm moving to approve the planning hearing officer's motion to approve commission and adopt the related ordinance.
Second.
Mayor, council, I'll just clarify for, for the record, is to motion to approve it per the memo from the Planning Development Department Director dated June twenty-third, twenty-twenty, and adopt the related ordinance. And that covers those three stipulations that I briefly summarized into the record are spelled out in detail in that memo. And so that'll take care of the, the legal paperwork side of it in, in that approval.
Thank you very much.
Any comments? Roll call.
DeCicio.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Guadado.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
We next move to item 86, an item in the Vice Mayor's district. We'll turn it over to the Vice Mayor to introduce the item.
Perfect. So I would first like to start a report from staff on this item just to introduce the item for us, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Vice Mayor. These two items are a related general plan amendment and zoning case that can be heard and presented together and testimony taken. We'll just need separate actions like the last case that we just had. Item 86 is a general plan amendment for the northwest and northeast corners of Ballpark Boulevard and Camelback Road and the northwest corner of 107th Avenue and Camelback. The zoning case that's for a smaller subset of that general plan area is approximately 315 feet west of the northwest corner of Ballpark Boulevard and Camelback Road. This aerial shows the area. The zoning case is in blue. The larger general plan area is the purple and the blue area shown on this aerial. The inset of that is the Ballpark Spring Training Facility that is around in this area. The general plan amendment request is from public-owned open space and residential 3.5 to 5 dwelling units per acre, residential 10 to 15 dwelling units per acre, and mixed use. The acreage is almost 81 acres. Staff does recommend approval per the Planning Commission recommendation. This is what the current general plan looks like. At one point, this subject site in the immediate corner is land that was owned by the City of Phoenix and was planned for a park. Park facility was built just down the road on the southeast corner of 107th Avenue and Camelback. And so this land is being sold by the City of Phoenix. It's part of that surplus, you know, land that the city has been going through and working to find buyers for the last few years. So it does go residential 10 to 15 dwelling units per acre, and then the pink color is mixed use for the remainder of the area. The related zoning case goes from S1 special permit, S1 to R2. It's an 18-acre site. It is multifamily residential. Staff does recommend approval per the memo dated June 22, 2020, from staff. Here's the blow-up of the area for the rezoning request. And so you can see that to the south is R16 and R2 residential zoning as well. The proposed project is an apartment project that is one of the newer style of apartment projects that looks like a single-family homes that are attached together, but it is a product that, there are a number of them that have been built and are under construction throughout the valley, but they are for-rent units. Here's the elevations of what they look like for this particular project. Staff does recommend approval per the Planning Commission recommendation and approval of the zoning case from the memo dated June 22, 2020, with the additional stipulation that clarified the open space as it relates to the project. And with that, staff's happy to answer any questions. I would note for the record that this one was denied by the Maryville Village Planning Committee, but approved by the Planning Commission. And with that, we're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Alan? All right, we will go ahead and open the public hearing. We'll begin with Jordan Rose.
Yes, this is Jordan Rose. Thank you. It's Jordan Rose from Rose Law Group on behalf of Empire Group and also the City of Phoenix and the City of Glendale in this application. I just wanted to briefly and wholeheartedly thank the Vice Mayor. She worked so hard on behalf of the community with us, and not only with us, but with the community members and even through, I know you had your staff out on weekends talking to people just to come up with the best plan for a future vibrant development at this important area to fulfill the visions of the ballpark and that the city had for mixed-use development around Camelback Ranch so long ago. And I just thank you for all the effort that you put into this. I have a full presentation, but in the interest of time, I would save my time for just any questions. Thank you so much.
Mayor.
Vice Mayor.
So Jordan, I have a couple... I have a question for you. So I know that since the Planning, since the Planning Commission, since the other votes that happened, I know that you and I have been working together and trying to find a solution to a lot of the concerns that people had had at the village. And I wanted to know, what is the progress that you have, that your client has made with the community leaders in addressing those concerns?
Appreciate it. I think two of the most important things that happened since the village, after you assembled the community groups with us, is you came up with a way for the money that the ball teams will pay to the city for that land to go directly to open space in District 5 and be reserved for any kind of public open space. In addition to that, which was really important, is we added perimeter trails to connect to the Aquafia Roche and a nearly unprecedented pedestrian trail through our residential community that will be open to pedestrians for the public. And so those things we did in an effort to work with community members' concerns, and we appreciated your leadership on that.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next will be Maggie Shrek, followed by John Katus.
Hello.
Hello.
Oh, you can hear me now? Wonderful. Good afternoon. Mayor, city council members, my name is Maggie Shrek, and I would like to speak in regards to item 86 on the agenda. We under... From what we're hearing now, apparently there were communications regarding this development and these zoning requests. However, we understand that the developer and representatives had in-person meetings that no one attended. The Maryville City Planning Commission voted unanimously against this development. For me personally, I could care less what happens west of the ballpark, but the property that adjoins 107th Avenue has been fought over for years in order to protect this neighborhood. Now, during the PowerPoint presentation, they did show the neighborhoods that were south and east of Ballpark Boulevard, but they didn't show the neighborhood that's north. This is a small neighborhood, one road in, one road out. Already experienced extreme issues because of the ballpark during spring training. If someone in this neighborhood has a medical emergency, they're going to die. The traffic is off the chart, and no one has addressed any of those issues. So we would like the council to vote against this zoning change, bring it back after the neighbors can be involved, because they have not been involved, and this does not follow the applicable law that requires neighborhood involvement in meetings. This all occurred while the entire state was under COVID-19 lockdown. So I don't believe it's legal. Thank you very much for hearing me.
Thank you. Mr. Katus is not wishing to speak, so we will have Bonnie Conrad, followed by Thomas Galvin. Bonnie, floor is yours.
Hello.
Hello.
Hi, this is Bonnie Conrad. I'm a resident of the Thoroughbred Farms neighborhood, which is north of Camelback, east of 107th, right across from the property that they want to rezone as mixed use, which I am totally against. That's just that section with the 107th Avenue and Camelback northwest corner. That is the entrance to our neighborhood, the only way in and out. And I would be totally against mixed use with the idea of hotels, restaurants, bars, whatever would go in there would no way be, as they state, sensitive to the scale and character of the surrounding neighborhood or incorporate to prevent negative impact on our residential properties. Our neighborhood is all horse properties with large irrigated lots. It is a quiet agricultural community. I'm totally against any type of business being put on that corner. And that is my main dissent about the general plan amendment, because I don't want to see that corner changed to mixed use. Maryville Village voted 12 to 0 against it. Why have village committees if the other committees aren't going to listen to them? Mixed use, a change to mixed use at this time just gives a developer a foot in the door to build what is not wanted. So if they remove the mixed use from the northwest corner of 107th and Camelback, I would be happier about that. They want more type of mixed use over by the ballpark, which is at Ballpark Avenue. Stay over there with their mixed use. And don't vote stuff like that at our neighborhood end. Thank you.
Thank you. Our final speaker will be Mr. Galvin.
Mayor, it appears he is not on the line.
All right. We will close the public hearing, and I will turn to the Vice Mayor.
Yes, so, thank you, Mayor. I just have a couple of questions for you, Alan. And I don't know if Inger, I don't know if you, I don't know if Inger's around, or maybe you can answer these questions. I know that in the sale of this parcel or in the sale of this piece of land, I just want to put it on the record that the money that we get out of the sale is going to stay in District 5? In the west side?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, I have had a discussion with Inger Erickson, the Parks and Recreation Department Director, and she did confirm that, yes, it would stay within, you know, the District 5 area.
And then my second question, I know that we're getting a lot of comments when it comes to new mixed use. Can you just tell us a little bit, what's the process that we would do with community if the ballpark came back to us and said, we want to build a hotel or retail or restaurant? Can you just explain to us what would be the process that we would use to engage community in this process?
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, that's a great question. I did put up the aerial here to help explain that. And so in this particular instance, the zoning case only covers the immediate area of the southwest corner of Ballpark Boulevard and Camelback Road. So that's the area of the zoning case. That is the one that legally establishes the ability to do uses. The other area in purple that goes over to 107th Avenue and Camelback is just a general plan amendment change, and it does not come with it any land use entitlements and zoning to do the mixed use. Currently, the properties are zoned a mix of S1 and the S1 special permit that allows for the ball fields to be there and the accessory uses that are part of a ball field. It wouldn't allow for a mixed use, you know, type of development. So that would be a future zoning case that would have to come forward to rezone the areas that are shown in purple to allow that mixed use to happen. As part of that rezoning request, there would be a notice required to all property owners within 600 feet of the surrounding boundaries, any neighborhood associations that are registered with the city within a mile. The properties would get posted with big four-foot-by-eight-foot signs saying rezoning, hearing. And it would go back through all of the steps that it just went through as part of this process with the Maryville Village Planning Committee, after they have to have a couple of neighborhood meetings, then the village, then the Planning Commission, and then ultimately the city council to make the final decision.
Perfect. Thank you so much. So with that, I just want to thank everyone that has been part of this project. I want to thank everyone's input from our different community leaders, from our planning commission, from our Maryville Village. I think everyone voiced their concern. I want to thank Jordan for addressing a lot of these concerns. I think everyone in District 5 has seen me, that has spoken to me, knows that I will always take community input very seriously, and we will always let our different community leaders lead the charge in terms of what needs to happen in the district and what are some of the changes that they would like to see happen. And I am 100% committed to that, committed to that and making sure that we let community continue to drive the conversation and making sure that we can actually be able to meet in the middle and bring in good development, but at the same time, continue to work on open spaces and engagement with our different community leaders. So with that, I would like to make the motion to approve per the Planning Commission's approval on June 4, 2020, and adopt the related resolution.
Second. Any council member comments? Roll call.
Mayor.
Councilwoman Williams.
I have a potential conflict on these two items and will not participate.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Roll call.
DeCecio.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
Nowakowski.
I have a comment. Mayor, I just want to thank the Vice Mayor for trying to find that happy ground and trying to win-win in this situation, and I'll be voting a yes on this.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Guadado.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes eight zero.
Congratulations, Vice Mayor. We next move to item 87. Do you have a motion?
Yes, I have a motion to approve further Planning Commission's approval on June 4, 2020, and adopt the related ordinance.
Second.
Mayor, members of council, if I could just clarify that one for the record. It would be a motion to approve per the memo from the Planning and Development Director dated June 22, 2020, and then adopt the related ordinance.
Vice Mayor, I could not hear you. Are you comfortable per the Planning Director?
Yes, I am definitely comfortable with that, yes.
I thought you might be. And I'm sorry, did we have a second?
Sorry, yes.
Yes, Mayor.
I second it.
That's right. Councilwoman Stark had seconded. Any council member comments? Roll call.
DeCecio.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
Nowakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Guadado.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes eight zero.
That concludes our agendized business for today's formal city council meeting. We will next turn to public comment. We have eight members of the public wishing to address the council. We will turn to our city attorney to introduce... We will turn to our city attorney to introduce and explain the logistics of public comment.
Mayor, Mayor, this is the city manager. If I might, just in order to finish one bit of business, that was a request from Councilman DeCiccio about some information on the community legal services. Ms. Franklin does have that information as we promised to get during this meeting, if we might.
Please.
Thank you, City Manager Zerker, Mayor Gallego, and Councilman DeCiccio. To answer your question, we did go back and, and take a look. It is not based upon an hourly rate, and this is relative to your question regarding community and legal services. It is a flat rate. Those attorneys that are referenced in the, I think you referenced the attorneys and what they would be doing, would be based at those eight or nine Phoenix-based justice courts working forty hours a week. Our tracking mechanism for them will be reports that need to come back to us on a monthly basis indicating the number of clients that are served and the types of services that are provided. But to answer your question, no, it is not based upon an hourly rate.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. It's a little unusual, but that's fine. I got the answer.
Thank you. Thank you, Director Franklin and Councilman DeCiccio. Could we turn to our city attorney to introduce public citizen comment?
Thank you, Mayor. During citizen comment, members of the public may address the city council for up to three minutes on issues of interest or concern to them. The Arizona Open Meeting Law permits the city council to listen to the comments, but prohibits council members from discussing or acting on the matters presented.
Thank you. We will begin with Luis Herrera, followed by Suzanne Steinberg.
A little bit staticy, but I can hear you. Can you guys hear me?
Much better now.
So my name is Bash, and I'm a member of Unite Here Local Eleven. I work at the Convention Center downtown, and, you know, we welcome people from all over the world that come to visit us. And three months ago, I got laid off, so I kind of just want to share about my experiences since then. So it's been pretty stressful for me since I've gotten laid off. I had to find another job because, you know, I still got my rent. To pay, so I've all my bills to pay, and, you know, and, you know. There's so many people that literally ask for, there's not even, especially when we there's shift change, like, there's just people, and the whole, their entire priority is just how much money can we make, how much can we produce, and it's not, you know, how can we keep our workers safe? You know, after, there's already been like fifteen cases, I mean, there's already lost count of how many pieces there is. And, you know, when we go to the center, I'm just, I don't want to spend that attention. I don't want to be, my, you know, a lot of people are dying, and I don't want my friends to like have to get sick. People have to worry about, you know, not having enough time to like go on their breaks so that they can like, you know, wash their hands, and it's, it's, I just don't want to see this happen at the convention center when I go back. And, you know, I'm worried about myself, but, you know, I'm also just worried about my coworkers and about, you know, their families. Families, and if they end up getting them sick, so, you know, people haven't seen anything to do something to help these people. And we needed that. I want to make sure that when I go back, that people are actually taken care of, and there's guidelines in place that people are safe and not to worry about dying. Like, this is, this should be the number one priority for citizens, to take care of our workers, make sure that they don't have to worry about getting sick. So I asked that the city council pass an ordinance and to protect and support the hospitality and food service workers and set an example for the rest of the country, because this needs to be the number one priority. People are dying, and people deserve to get taken care of. People don't, shouldn't be losing their jobs. People shouldn't be losing their health care. And so we, I, we need to see something change. Otherwise, like, all of you guys are going to come election day.
Suzanne will be followed by Lucia Salinas.
Am I doing, oh, hello?
Hello.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Mayor, I'm sorry, is, is that an issue on our side, or is that an issue with them that we just can't hear anything?
Well, I heard her say, can you hear me, and then I didn't hear her say anything after that, so I do not know.
I'm trying to figure out, can you hear me now?
Now we can hear you.
Okay, I think I'm just pushing the button or something, I'm sorry. Um, so you can still hear me, right?
Yes, we can.
Okay, so I have one, um, one thing is about the street names. I know you guys are going to talk about it next time. I wanted to ask to consider Indian School Road and Indian School Park as also derogatory terms, and to consider the, those street names to be changed and that park name to be changed. I also wanted to ask for a new code. Right now, we have a code for railings, if you have a railing or you don't have a railing. And I wanted to ask for an additional code for if the railing is extremely loose to, because there are a lot of extremely loose railings. Sometimes you need a railing to be loose and forgive, but sometimes it's loose due to the, the rot, the wood rot. And so I also sent something to the council members about the street names and the additional, the additional code for railings. Um, and then the last thing I wanted to talk about is like, my mom has an extreme mental health disability, and right now, there's no programs for children who have parents who are hard, become part of the mental health care system at a very young age. And I don't know how you would begin that funding, but if that's something connecting with a nonprofit to make sure that population of people is being heard, because they're also the voiceless. And then as another thing, I recently, there's a lot of people who have mental health disabilities that are dying due to their disability that is a preventable death, but there's a misunderstanding about disability rights because of the history of disabilities. Usually, it's about more independence versus less, so to look into educating the public about the difference in the range of mental health disabilities. And that was it.
Mayor, this is the city clerk. I just wanted to confirm that we have received in the city clerk's office two citizen petition requests from Suzanne Steinberg related to this change of street names was one of them, and related to the railings was the second one.
We will next go to Lucia, followed by Marisela Mares. Lucia, floor is yours.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, yes, we can.
Oh, okay. My name is Lucia Salinas. I work with HMS Hosts. I think I've been talking too much to the city of Phoenix, but we've been, I've been with the company for eighteen years, and now, like, they're already starting opening our restaurants. I don't have a choice to go back, but we're still concerned, and I'm still afraid to go back more because I've been talking to coworkers. Actually, they've been calling me that one coworker on Terminal Four is a bartender. He got the positive, uh, positive COVID nineteen, so he got the coronavirus. So, and he's a worker from HMS Hosts. And I'm afraid to go back, actually, and, but I don't have another choice to go back because I need my insurance. Um, are you guys hear me? Hello? Hello?
Yes, we hear you.
Yeah. Okay. Um, yeah, so, so it's very frightening to go back with, uh, to the airport, but I don't have like a choice. We don't have choice to just go back and work because we need our insurance. I, I need my insurance. I, I am, I'm an illness person that, but also like, I'm afraid because if I go back, I'm more easier to get the COVID nineteen. And I know I'm not the only one with, with health problems. Also, there's others where right now, few of them already start, starting working, and on top of that, they're like, um, working with that environment, they're not making hours either. So they're risking also their health and for a little bit hours. So they're not even making a lot of money either to pay their mortgage or their bills, and they cannot apply for an appointment because if they're making two forty, it's a lot already. So, I, we, actually, we need you guys' help, while you, how you guys can help us. I mean, we're the city of Phoenix, we work for the city of Phoenix, the airport, because of us, the airport runs, like, it's very sad to, to find out that coworkers are getting sick, and I'm afraid to go back. Thank you.
Thank you. Marisela will be followed by Mari Yepes.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, my name is Marisela. I live in District Eight, and I'm a proud member of Unite Here Local Eleven. Like many people have been saying, myself and others in the hospitality industry are being put in a really impossible decision right now between going back to work and risking our lives or staying home and losing our health benefits, running out of unemployment benefits, you know, and we really need the support of the city of Phoenix to pass an ordinance to protect us. You know, it's not, it's not just that our state, our city is bringing profits over people's lives. You know, people, you know, people, members of my, of my community, coworkers, people that I know from the industry are getting sick. You know, as a hospitality worker, we're on the front lines, right? And it is completely up to, you know, it's completely in your control to do something about it, and I really urge you to consider passing an ordinance so that, you know, we have the, the proper protective gear so that we can get better sick hours in case we do get sick. And then overall, just that we have a job to go back to once it's safe to go back to work. It's not fair that people should be fired because they're fearing for their life, you know, for going to work and getting coronavirus. That's not fair. It's incredibly cruel, and, you know, we're really looking to you all to be leaders and actually do something about this. Yeah.
Thank you. Mari will be followed by Michelle.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you, Mayor Gallego and Vice Mayor Guardado, and members of the city council. My name is Mari Yepes. I'm a former hotel worker, and I now work as an organizer with the Hospitality Workers Union, Unite Here Local Eleven. I am speaking on the importance of passing measures to protect workers in the hospitality industry. Currently, due to COVID nineteen, thousands of tourism workers have been laid off or terminated. Those that are laid off live with uncertainty, not knowing if they will be able to return to their jobs. Those that are terminated are left without anything. I spoke with few people who worked at the Arizona Grand. Some of them have worked there for over twenty years, and they were all terminated as of May fifteenth. Tourism workers didn't cause this pandemic. The tour, tourism industry will recover. Those workers who built the Phoenix hospitality industry should be able to return to their jobs. Now, as our state government reopened, Arizona hospitality workers are faced with more uncertainty. After speaking with hundreds of hotel workers across the valley, I know that they are, they are worried and are scared, as you've heard from some people today, about what happens if they fall sick at work. Many hospitality workers use all their paid time off to offset their income loss when they were laid off or furloughed. Workers should not have to worry about how to take time off if they contract this serious virus. Not surprisingly, as a state where COVID cases are skyrocketing, hospitality workers are getting sick. In the Point Hilton squat peak, two housekeepers have tested positive for COVID, and a third awaits the result of her test. Hotels and other hospitality venues are not yet equipped with proper training to ensure that workers and guests are safe. Workers need additional time in the workday to follow safety protocols to slow the spread of the virus, and workers need training and equipment to follow new safety protocols. This council has an opportunity to protect the jobs, the health, and the safety of hospitality workers. Please pass the Phoenix Healthy Hospitality and Tourism Measures so that Phoenix can remain the premier destination that hospitality workers have built. Thank you.
Thank you. Michelle will be followed by Lacy.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Awesome. My name is Michelle Hornstein, and I work as a server in Sky Harbor Airport. I'm a member of Unite Here Local Eleven, and I have worked for SSP America for over five years. I feel that's my duty today to speak with you because I know that my safety and that of my family and the general public are at risk. I want to thank you for taking steps to ensure face masks are worn by all as we see huge spikes in COVID cases here in the valley. Thank you to Councilman Garcia, Councilwoman Pastor, Vice Mayor Guardado, and Councilman Noakowski for setting up meetings with my coworkers and myself, pledging to do everything you can to protect hospitality workers. Mayor Gallego, after many emails and phone calls, I am very happy to say that I finally heard back from your assistant today, and we are all looking forward to meeting with you as soon as possible to discuss putting measures in place to protect us. The restaurants in the airport are beginning to reopen when we have been dubbed a new epicenter for this virus. This is not only dangerous, but it is also very telling of just how little our companies value our health and safety. We are seeing thousands of new cases each day, and it is glaringly clear that Arizona does not have this surge under control. I am being asked to go back to work and expose myself to this virus and then return home to my three-year-old daughter. I'm curious why more value is being placed on large corporations and not on the lives of those of us who are the heartbeat of an industry which generates billions of dollars for your city each year. What about the lives of all the passengers, too? When the public hears that the airport is a COVID nineteen hotspot, everybody's financial stability will be in jeopardy yet again. Just last week, a bartender for Hosts tested positive with COVID nineteen. I'm speaking to all of you, but I know some of you never actually listen to the voice of the people, so I'm going to speak directly to you, Mayor Gallego. These companies are quite possibly sending us back into the airport to die. I do not want to be forced to choose between catching something that could kill me and my child or losing my home. Please don't forget about us. We are counting on you to do the right thing and pass an ordinance to keep hospitality workers safe. Thank you.
Lacy will be followed by Obed.
Hi. Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right. My name is Lacy Ross, and I'm a snack bar attendant at Phoenix Sky Harbor Airport with HMS Hosts. I'm also a member of Unite Here Local Eleven. I've been committed to keeping the business running smoothly, and I've not been laid off any time during this pandemic. Me and my coworkers have weathered the storms and loss of hours, but to, but continue to come to work to serve the travelers of Phoenix to the best of our ability. I was recently exposed to COVID nineteen at home and took two weeks to quarantine. I approached the Human Resources Manager at HMS Hosts to ask for a continued furlough for the safety of both myself and those around me, while the coronavirus cases spiked in Arizona and as more and more travelers... in Arizona and as more and more travelers start to come through the airport. I understand HMS Host is doing what they're expected to do to keep the employees safe. Unfortunately, with the rise of traffic in Arizona and in the airport and the rapid rise of COVID cases, these protocols are no longer efficient in ensuring that both employees and travelers can work and travel safely, and there should be more action and options available to ensure our safety. Already, there have been confirmed cases of COVID-19 amongst the HMS Host employees at the airport. I was told that if I was not comfortable in working in the airport environment, that I should resign and that no restaurant in the airport would be able to accommodate the social distancing as recommended. HMS Host has negligently forced me to return to work and are continuing to bring everybody else back without choice despite the already positive cases in our airport. To an environment where profit is clearly given priority over the safety of Sky Harbor employees and airport passengers, the city of Phoenix has been compliant in all of these actions, or, yeah, as you continue to sit on the sidelines and vote to pass relief onto these companies. When and how will the city of Phoenix, the decision-makers of the airport, decide our health is important, too? The relaxed policy at the airport should concern us all. This problem needs to be addressed immediately. Thank you.
Thank you. Our final speaker will be Obed.
Hello. Oh, sorry. My name is Obed Cardine. I am a server at the Phoenix Sky Harbor Airport with HMS Host. I am also a union member with Unite Here Local 11. I've been an employee who is on furlough at the inception of this global pandemic. I've been fortunate enough to receive unemployment benefits, but due to policy, I have had my health benefits dropped. As someone who has had their mother, grandmother, and two other family members recovering from COVID-19 as we speak, I'm reaching out to you today with my concerns that the policy that HMS Host is carrying out is negligent and irresponsible. At this time of overwhelming uncertainty, the assumption that HMS can continue to operate even with the given CDC regulations that have been implemented is exposing all employees to unethical business practices, choosing to continue business without stringent, comprehensive contact tracing, without mandatory quarantines, excuse me, after employees have had confirmed positive COVID-19 tests in mandatory self-isolation, oh, and without mandatory isolation of individuals who have come into contact with known COVID-positive persons, put all HMS Host staff and families' health at risk. Furthermore, HMS Host operates units in the airport whose small space renders social distancing and effective contingencies ineffective. Given the Phoenix Sky Harbor is a major transportation hub, it is imperative that the point of contact with the rest of the nation have higher standards than other private businesses, and not to do so would be irresponsible and detrimental to not only our state's public health, but the nation's as well. Though I have personally not been called back from furlough, I am aware that when that time comes, I have no choice but to participate in a reckless process that is putting lives in danger. The policy HMS Hosts is in acting poses an ultimatum of work or resign, as if circumstances and conditions employees agree to on their hire date are the same. I hope that the policy the state will pass reflects that public health is more important than building wealth. Thank you.
Thank you. That is our final speaker for public comment. We are adjourned.